28th, 2022 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Chesapeake Beach to order. Waiting for Madam Clerk to get back to her chair. But I would like to call roll and Madam Clerk, record that everyone is in attendance except for Ms. Hahn, who was absent tonight. Okay, number two, I'd like to ask for approval of the September 28th Planning and Zoning Agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda?
A second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Number three, approval of the minutes of the September 6th Planning and Zoning Meeting. I have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no oppose, thank you.
Madam Chairman, can I ask one question?
Yes.
The August 4th minutes were not approved at the last meeting. So what does that mean? They don't get published or?
Madam Clerk, how do we respond to having minutes that were not approved?
I've never had minutes not approved.
This is only the only commission that she's ever had where nobody approved the minutes. We will have to probably review those minutes and review the tape and come back again. I think we had one commissioner who wanted some additions or some deletions, whatever. So I think I will have to work with Ms. Hahn on that and we'll try and get them back to us. And if you can possibly bring out your notes, we'll go ahead and try and review them so that we can approve them. Thank you for bringing that up. I wish you hadn't, but thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Brown. All right.
That's on page two of today's, or the last meeting's minutes.
Yeah, that's true. Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Okay, now we're going to go to public comment. Now, the public comment is on anything on the agenda and we will have to stick to a two-minute limit tonight. We have a very big agenda, so Ms. Hahn over here is going to even time us tonight so that we can stick to our two-minute limit. Okay, who would like to be first? Please come on forward. And state your name and your address, please, for our record.
Sure. Good evening, Commissioners. It's Gary and, I'm sorry? You hear?
Yeah, it's just a little bit louder. Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Starting again. I got the light on, yeah. Good evening, again. This is Gary and Donna Cole Smith. We live at 8200 Elm Lane. My wife and I are here this evening to ask you not to approve the zoning map changes, specifically the several blocks of the Wicker Sham subdivision proposed to change from RV to RC. Per your planner's recommendation D, the RC is a non-residential district. The town, the county, and the Critical Area Commission have all recognized the areas south of Cox Road and westbound lane as residential lots and have planned and have tax for planning and tax purposes. The area contains seven existing homes as well as numerous lots of record. Most of the residences have been in existence for over 40 years. Rezoning these properties to RC would adversely impact the use and substantially devalue them and would be considered a taking. Rezoning them to RC greatly limit our use and enjoyment compared to other similar properties in the town of Chesapeake Beach. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much for coming forward tonight. Appreciate your testimony. Okay, who would be next?
Can you hear me?
We can. Can you hear her?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
My name is Patricia Shosla. I live at 8205 F Street and I agree with Mr. Cole Smith's recommendation to not to approve the zoning of the map change. Rezoning to RC is not in our interest. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Next, please.
My name is John McKay. I was at the last meeting. I live at 3559 Cox Road at the top of the hill and I truly believe that the map was ill-conceived, that the proper attention wasn't given to what's already in the neighborhood. I mean, I'm not prepared for this. I just found out about this last night, so I apologize. I really don't understand why they want to turn our homes into resource conservation. I mean, I understand the other lots. I just don't understand why you want to do it to our actual houses and why no answer was given after the last meeting. We were told our questions and our comments were going to be answered and I never received anything. I agree with them 100%. I just don't think this, the proper consideration was taken for us.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. It will be on our agenda tonight under Section 5, so if you wanted to stay a little bit longer, we will be addressing the map at the end of the section 5. Thank you for coming. Who else would like to come forward?
Hello. My name is Greta Clark. I live at 7952 Streamwalk Way. I submitted a letter to you all this week, so I don't know if I need to read that to you or if that's a part of.
We have all received your letter, so thank you for sending it. I do appreciate it.
Okay, I just, yes, I just want, I wasn't sure if I needed to comment on that.
Thank you, no, thank you. What else would you like to, would you like to say anything else about?
No, just that, you know, we are at the bottom of the hill, you know, and we knew that there was a potentially an option to extend our street. Ryan Holmes, at the time, told us it would be 12 homes and now it's up to 52. So we are very scared about the traffic and everything else on our street. And, you know, especially because it's a nice, quiet street and so we're really nervous about the idea of expanding that to this extent, so. But my concerns were in my letter, so, thank you.
I have one question, Madam Chair. You're at 79?
52.
79, so you're all the way at the?
Yeah, we're the last house on the right-hand side at the bottom of the street.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming forward tonight. Yes, next, please.
Before I get started, I know I've emailed to you, Madam Chairman, and to Mr. Jakubiak my letter.
We all have gotten it. They all have it. Yes, they do.
Yes, they do. Then I'll be brief. It's in my letter. I'm Joe Devlin, attorney for Richfield Station Joint Venture. And what we're trying to point out, again, is that the premises upon which we believe that Block Q, the 13 lots there, and this FIDS area were placed in FC were incorrect. As I noted in the letter, on page 61 of the comprehensive plan, it notes that these two areas were both noted as forest conservation areas when they are not. And so what we tried to do is indicate that the lots for Block Q, the 13 lots, although 41 have been recorded, the 13 have not, they have all been approved, et cetera. And we do, we would have the ability, under the RPC zoning, to ultimately bring those plots forward again to get permission to build out the whole community. But if you take away the RPC, then it's gone, potentially. And we don't think that's fair. It's part of what this town has planned on. Richfield Station's been there for, been developed for over 25 years. And as you noted in your comprehensive plan, those numbers have already been incorporated into what you plan for the town or expect the town to do. That's one. The other one is just on this FIDS area, what I tried to do, because it is a little confusing, but the FIDS area boundary does not include this area we're talking about that was reserved for development per Paragraph 1. And as Mr. Jakubiak, I think, noted, at that time, back when, and unfortunately, nobody here was there at that time, other than me and Mr. Repke, there was a cul-de-sac with a shared driveway proposal, but nobody was ready to move forward with it at that time, so that's why it was specifically put into the agreement that we're giving all this acreage for purposes that are rest-sited in there, but we do want in the future to draw on that if, as, and when. And that's, and a covenant is a contract. We believe that we would like the contract simply to be enforced. And again, just keep the playing field level.
Thank you, Mr. Devlin. We really appreciate your comments.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And we do have your information here, so thank you so much.
May I ask a question, Mr. Devlin?
Yes, go ahead. Mr. Devlin, one question.
So the FIDS property, as recognized in the covenant, is 202 acres, 202.78 acres. Currently, on the Calhoun County interactive maps, the GIS data is saying 199. something acres. So can you explain the difference?
I'm not sure I can explain the difference, other than what's on the exhibits and what's on the plats. So I don't know who changed the number, but it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 200 acres. Whether it's 199. something or 202, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 200 acres. I'm sure the engineers can drill it down.
But you don't know why the recording is different and you believe that the FIDS area has not changed?
Oh, no, no, it has not changed since we agreed upon it and has not changed since we recorded it. What the numbers, again, I just don't know the answer to your question about the numbers. I'll look at that. But the FIDS area and the outline, the meets and bounds description have never changed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Devlin. We appreciate that. Okay, next, please, for the public comment.
Wes Donovan, let's go 3737 East Chesapeake Beach Road tonight. I'm going to assume that everyone got my pictures that I sent of the boat tail. I know we had talked about it at the last, at the end of last one. I'm assuming it's line 49 and 58 in the chart that we're going to be addressing tonight in the RC zone. I have a question on recommendation number eight. My question is, how many properties would be, or how many future planned developments would be affected by the 10-dwelling unit and the required open space? And then, lastly, it was a question about the agenda. The last few pages that were on tonight's agenda online, they talk about a floating zone and, but it, there was no?
Actually, Mr. Donovan, that was a commissioner's set of agendas that she had, that she put forward. So that was actually not on the agenda, but it was just a commissioner comment, basically. So I'm sorry for your confusion on that.
Yeah, because it said communication and future agenda items.
Yeah, and commissioner comments as well. So it's a commissioner comment that she put in.
Okay, because it just said that and I was like?
Well, if you look on the?
Then it had public letters.
Communications, yes. It's communications, but thank you for reading all the way through. I do appreciate that. And so does Mrs. Blackwalder, too.
We have a lot to be thankful for in here in Chesapeake Beach and, you know, I want to make sure that we all do our due diligence.
Good, I'm glad you do. Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Okay, who else would like to come forward, please? Okay, seeing no other comments, I'm going to bring it back to the dais and actually, I have a few things I would like to say and I'm going to go back to our public hearing. So on July 27th, 2022, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to receive testimony and input on proposed zoning ordinance text amendments. The Commission's recommendations of these amendments are essential in order for our town council to move forward in implementing the recently updated comprehensive plan. On behalf of the Commissioners, I would like to thank Mayor Mahoney and the town council for their support and understanding of our need to thoroughly go through the issues and also our extraordinary staff, Mrs. Holly Wall, Town Administrator, Mr. Jakubiak, Town Planner, and our Town Clerk, Ms. Sharon Humm, for working so hard to support the Commissioners on getting to this point. I would also like to thank the town residents for providing important input and the town business owners and the property owners and the developers who all offered significant testimony as well. So we thank you all for being part of this process. Tonight, I'm hopeful that the Commission will complete the process of deciding the fate of the remaining amendments and the amended zoning map. To remind everybody what has been decided since we began our deliberations, I will summarize briefly. The amendments and potential changes to Chapter 290 of the town code that have already been passed by the Commission and will be included as recommendations to the town council include the following: a building height reduction to 35 feet in the high-density and maritime commercial zones; a new building height definition; a change of measuring building height for multifamily and commercial buildings; elimination of a bonus density overlay district that previously allowed the Planning Commission to increase the building height to 50 feet in certain areas; changing district names and amending definitions to more appropriately identify the residential and commercial zones; updating and amending minimum lot sizes for building requirements for all districts and commercial zones; and updating and amending minimum lot sizes for building requirements for all, I'm sorry, I just read that one, for housing, for open space requirements for housing developments as well. And also, tonight's agenda is going to include addressing the open space requirements for, actually, for the housing developments tonight and the resource conservation zone uses. And also, we're going to reevaluate and look at the updated zoning map. So let's continue on unfinished business, which is number five. And the first thing I'd like to do is ask Mr. Jakubiak to please explain the different classifications for these different uses, because I think there was some confusion last time as far as what SC and SE and C, what those different designations were all about, as far as those uses.
Okay, so there are a variety of permitted use, uses. There's uses that are permitted by right. There's no question that those uses are allowed within the districts where they are designated. There are conditional uses and these uses are permitted as well, but there are some conditions that are attached to them. So an applicant would have to satisfy the conditions. And if that, if it were a matter of a site plan review, the applicant would present a site plan demonstrating that the conditions were satisfied before the Planning Commission could approve that site plan. So those are C for conditional uses. Again, they're permitted, but there are just some conditions attached to them. And then there are special exception uses. And a special exception is a use that's customarily not, one that may raise issues about whether it's the right use for a specific location within the zone. So typically, it's a use that may have impacts that need to be thought about and critically examined. And so a special exception use, again, is permitted and the, it's presumed to be a valid use within the zone, but there are standards in the zoning ordinance that have to be applied by the Board of Appeals and it's basically a test of impacts. And the question is whether the impacts of that use at that location are above and beyond what they would be irrespective of where it was located. So it's really kind of looking at that particular use, whatever it is, say it's a restaurant, does its impacts create negative situations for the neighborhood or the traffic that are at this particular location? So it's a study of, an impact-based study. And the Board of Appeals has to go through that in a quasi-judicial hearing. Applicant and experts are cross-examined and the board makes a decision about whether it's permitted. If it's permitted and if the use is permitted, it then comes to the Planning Commission for site plan review. Okay? The Planning Commission always has that site plan review authority on those. And then there are another set of uses in the table called special exception subject to conditions. So it's the same, it's a merger of the C and the SE uses, same thing as a standard special exception, but there's an extra test that an applicant has to pass or you have to satisfy certain conditions related to the use before you even are eligible to proceed to the Board of Appeals. In fact, the Board of Appeals will make the determination if those conditions are satisfied when they review your special exception.
So the SE is the special exceptions, but the SC is the special exceptions with conditions? I think we had a little bit of confusion with that. Okay, so?
May I clarify the process for one?
Say that again?
I'm a little, I just want to clarify that I understood the process that you described. Did you say that every special exception that goes to the Board of Appeals also comes to the Planning Commission?
If it requires a site plan approval.
That's what, yeah, that was what I thought. But the special exception with conditions does come to the Planning Commission?
Again, if it requires a site plan approval, it would.
Only if it requires a site plan. Okay.
So if you go to the first one, under unfinished business, consider and vote on Planner's Recommendation B, which is Amendment to Article 3, Section 290-11, Conditions and Standards for Conditional and Special Exception Uses, Adding Conditions for Uses Permitted Within the Resource Conservation Zone. If you go to your item in the agenda packet, we now have to go ahead and evaluate how we want to do these particular ones that we didn't get to at the last meeting, which is number 13, 14, 15, 16, 18, 52, and 58. Now, this is where I also want to ask you a question about location. Now, I know this is all in the resource conservation zone that we have in the new map, draft map, I should call it. What is it about these locations that would make it, first of all, in the RC and secondly, why would it be problematic? Why are we worried about these areas to build in? What is the problem for these particular areas? Like, are they located and, I mean, are some of these properties, that these different things that could go into them, are these properties in very sensitive areas potentially or what are they?
The resource conservation district is, comprises environmentally sensitive areas, areas that are flood zone or prone to being inundated with sea level rise, flooding issues that are wetlands or marshes, steep slopes and intact forested areas.
So generally, are a lot of these areas going to be flooded or do we know if they're going to be flooded or what is the impact to the town if we approve building on a lot of these different sites or potential sites?
Well, on some sites, the land is clearly steeply sloped and wooded, so building would remove the slope and would remove a substantial amount of the forested area. There are parts of the RC that are developed already and those are two, roughly two small parcels that are along the Fishy Creek shoreline. And those areas are not pristine by any stretch of imagination. They have been historically developed and put to a variety of marina uses, quasi-industrial type of uses, but they are projected to be at severe risk of sea level rise and flooding. They are mapped on the, in the comprehensive plan, so designated in the comprehensive plan and that's why they are designated as resource conservation. Development there would not have the same impacts as in an intact forested area on a steep slope, for instance. So it's, there's a variety. Of course, there are wetlands that are classified as RC that could not be developed anyway because of state and federal regulations.
Okay, any questions from Mr. Jakubiak on number 13? Environmental science research and educational uses, nature center as a conditional use in the RC district, subject to the requirements of the district where located and the following. And then it has one through four different conditions. Any questions about these? Who would like to start?
Are we going through each one?
Yes, we're going to go through each one individually. I think it'd be easier if we did that this time.
Okay.
Okay, so anybody have any questions? Ms. Blackwalder, do you have any questions about number 13?
Number, specifically number 13?
Yeah, I'm going to go in order because I think there, we've obviously had some issues with these. So number 13, and if you're not, if you're not ready, I'll ask Ms. Brolle. Ms. Brolle, do you have anything on number 13?
Yes.
Any questions for Mr. Jakubiak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to clarify, this area is prone to flooding. Is that, is that correct? The number 13, environmental science research and educational uses there in the, in the RC?
So it's the whole district?
The whole district, yeah. Well, that could be anywhere in the district.
So anyway, so this area, is it susceptible to flooding?
Some parts of the resource conservation district are, yes.
So I guess my question is, why, in looking at the conditions for this area on number 13, it seems not smart to allow a building to put in this, this area, certainly the area that is vulnerable to flooding?
Building would be damaged in a flood event or?
Well, yes, I mean, certainly the building would be damaged, but I don't, why would we, why would somebody want to build in an area that is, is probably very susceptible to flooding? I mean, why, why would, it seems to me, why would the, you know, would we approve that type of dwelling to be put there when it just, in 10 years, the whole area could be underwater?
There are floodplain protection zones. The floodplain protection ordinance is in place, so any building that would be constructed would be elevated. The Planning Commission has recommended that the floodplain regulations and critical area standards be revised and updated to even increase the amount of freeboard, which is the distance between the top of the flood zone and the building, even higher as an added measure. And, and the other factor involved here is that the Planning Commission has limited the number of uses allowed in the resource to so few as to almost make the resource conservation district unusable. And you don't want to do that. So this is one use that, that kind of requires a building. You don't see a science center or a nature center without a building. So, and in the resource conservation zones that are, the part of the resource conservation zones where sea level rise is going to impact things, those areas have been developed already to some extent and these are uses that would not introduce population into those areas. So it seemed like the lower intensity type of use that would be a good match for the environmental conditions out there.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, Commissioner? Before I ask about this, just remind all the good citizens that are here, this, what we are doing is making a recommendation to the town council. So this is not your last bite at the apple. If we fail to address your concern, you will have the, because it, it is simply a recommendation that the town council adopt the, our recommendations in the zoning code. If they don't, or if they adopt something else, that depends a lot on what intends, that depends entirely upon what the town council chooses to do. So, Mr. Jakubiak, you said in the answer to the last question, something that I, I didn't understand. The, you said if you're in a floodplain, that you can adjust the height of the building to higher depending on where the floodplain is? I thought our new definition that we voted? I thought our new definition that we voted on was from the existing ground level, not uh, re, um, rebuilt, but from what it is to thirty-five feet. So I'm, I was a bit confused by that.
So there are two things, that's, that's the issue of building height. Obviously, if you wanted to elevate your building, put it on stilts to get it out of the water, you get closer to that thirty-five foot very quickly. So you may be limited to a one-story type of structure.
Right.
So you wouldn't be able to take full advantage of the thirty-five foot that others in the community would be able to.
Okay, that was, uh, wasn't clear to me at least on what you said. In the opening part of this, it says, uh, conditional use in the R C district, subject to the requirements of the district, were located. But I thought it was located in the R C district, so I'm, I'm not sure what that second phrase means. In this case, number thirteen, it says, um, it's permitted in the maritime commercial district. But, um, anyway, I, I find that confusing, so maybe you can explain it.
Explain it by saying that this is kind of a, a typographical error. It's byproduct of using multiple, copying and pasting from other parts of the code where there are multiple types of districts. So it's, it's important to say which, where it's located. In this present case, we're only talking about one, and it's a special exceptions allowed in only one district, in the R C district. So it doesn't need to say where it located.
That's, that's repeated in several more on here.
Right, I see this, yeah. It would make sense if there, where there are multiple districts at stake. In, in these set, we're only talking about one district, it's the resource district. So it's, it doesn't need to be restated like that, so.
We can cross that out.
There's, I guess it would say conditional use in the R C district, subject to the following, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So that, that change should apply to each one of these land uses, to the extent they, they remain after the discussion, they would be corrected that way.
Okay, that was my only question.
Thank you. And Ms. Redkey? Okay, and Ms. Blackwalder, did you have your question?
Um, my only question is process. Are we also considering what this is going to be in the table of uses, or?
Yes, this is in the table of uses.
So we're considering both these conditions and also the table of uses?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I don't have any questions. I'm interested to see what other commissioners want to do with this.
Okay, let's, let's, let's continue then.
Well, I would, I would expect that during this last column, that it would be assigned some letter designation.
Yes.
M and H, H H A A or something, so that it would refer to in the last column as C, Section 290-11 dash something.
Are you catching that, Mr. Jakubiak?
No, I'm very much aware this would be one of the conditions in twenty, 290-11. Right, so in the table, we'd have the right reference to this body of conditions.
So I guess my only last set of questions maybe for you is, so then if you were going to build a five thousand square foot nature center in the R C?
Yes.
I guess the question is, all the impervious materials that have to lead up to that five thousand, and then the parking that goes with the five thousand square foot property, because you're talking five thousand is this building here, right?
Yeah, this is.
And then you've got the parking that would probably be at least as much parking as this. So you're talking, it's a pretty large area that would be impervious materials, et cetera, in the R C?
Uh, could be, it would be at least five thousand square feet.
Well, yeah, I mean, it could.
Parking could be pervious, so you can get around that little bit. But I did, I did think about this, and I, I remember when Kathleen brought it to the, the commission, the first time we deliberated about it. I think I might have floated two thousand square feet as, you know, typical size. But then I actually went through all the community, community, I'm sorry, the, the, what do you call them? Environmental science, research, and educational type of buildings and, um, what else? I guess it's mostly on that, nature centers and the like. And, um, I couldn't find one that was around two thousand square feet. It almost seemed like if you were going to do a, a nature center or environmental research center or something like that, it had to have some heft. And, um, and I, I put a note there that said, they seem to range from four thousand square feet to seven thousand five hundred square feet. And, um, many of them are much larger, I mean, many are much larger. So, and I obtained the list from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources of all these centers. Then I went through Google Maps and I measured probably twelve of them, fifteen of them, just to get a sense. And they're not small.
Well, there's one more question I have for you. There seems to be a catch-22 because we had people, uh, people coming in to testify that their property would be rendered basically valueless if we maintain their property or that, but we put their properties in the R C, but yet we're willing to build in the R C. It seems like there's a, a catch-22 here. Are we, I mean, would their, would their property become less valuable or in value, or not valued at all if they were in the R C? But yet we're putting, we could possibly put a structure in the R C and make value out of it? I'm trying to, I'm a little confused on this. Would their, their property not be as valuable? It seems like if we can have value in the R C, such as putting an environmental science, research, and educational center, that putting property in the R C wouldn't be that problematic as far as value is concerned. Am I wrong here, or what? What's?
If you had expectations to be able to, under the current zoning laws, to be able to build houses, subdivide your property and build houses consistent with the law, and now you can't, then you have substantially lost value in your property. And so there has been, uh, there would be a substantial loss in value to a variety of individuals throughout the town on account of the R C zone.
Okay, all right, let's, let's bring it back to making this decision on this one. What would you say, Mrs. Blackwalder? How, how would you, how do you look at number thirteen, environmental sci, environmental science, research, and educational uses, et cetera? What do you say about that in the R C?
Oh, I say, um, for all of these, because our R C encompasses a variety of types of resource conservation areas and topographies, that they would all need to have that, that special exception Board of Appeals oversight. That's my feeling on it. I would also say that, um, I just want to remind everybody that our comprehensive plan has objective number seven, and it states, for the local environmental benefits they provide, secure for all time the remaining forest strands, especially those adjoining the town's major residential subdivisions, the parcel known as Randall Cliffs Heritage Area, and where possible and practical, allow hiking trails and related low-end pot, community enjoyment of the forests. So that, those are our two forest areas. I believe that maybe the, you know, I don't know that we need the, a five thousand square foot building in any of these areas. We are a small town, so I don't know that, you know, comparing the building size of one of these centers to other larger towns is necessary. But I, you know, I can envision a, a bathroom somewhere, I can envision sheds somewhere, or even a small little nature center with, you know, some birds in it one day, you know, something like that. But I believe that they should go to the, the Board of Appeals so that they can truly assess the impact of everything in the R C zone. And I also, while I'm on this Randall Cliffs parcel, I just want to remind the planners that, that planning does not have the G I S data for the protection there, and they asked for it, so I'm hoping that we can send that.
Is this about number thirteen? We want to stick to number thirteen?
Well, I, yeah, I just, I, sometimes things get lost. I just wanted to add that in there. But yes, but those are my general feelings about this.
Thank you, Ms. Brolle. What do you think about number thirteen?
I, I agree with Madam Chair's comment earlier. It seems in, you know, we've labeled this area, resource conservation, and then, and not to wander off of thirteen, but thirteen, then there's, um, item number fifteen, which is a public building, a recreational facility, then there's the sailing schools. And if every, and if those three alone, each are, are, have the opportunity to put a building, five thousand square feet, two thousand square feet, I don't know if in your comparison with other towns, um, Chris, i- if this was an area similar. It seems like a, a small area, and if we allow so much buildings in this area, I, I, it seems to me inconsistent with the titling of the resource conservation. You know, as a previous hearing, um, that when the public was allowed the opportunity to comment, they spoke about, um, they didn't want to see further development. And this seems to me, this is, in those three instances, those three areas alone, there's three buildings of at least five thousand uh, uh, square feet. And as I said, my point, not to beat it, is that it seems inconsistent with the titling of resource conservation.
Thank you, Ms. Brolle. Is, is that it? Did you?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I think we need to remember that this is private property we're talking about. We aren't talking about the town purchasing this and then making it, uh, a, a resource for the town. These are, uh, pieces of private property, and we're restricting the uses that the owners of this property can use this property for. As to this number four, no bo, no building exceeding five thousand square feet. That's five thousand square feet on that particular lot. The resource conservation area isn't one lot, correct? So it could be platted, you could have seventy-five hundred square foot lots, and this would permit a five thousand square foot building on that lot, and a five thousand square foot building on the lot next to it, and the lot adjacent to that, correct? I mean, this is all hypothetical.
Open space and the setbacks and all the other requirements, yeah.
Right, as long as it meets the other zoning requirements.
The lot size is twenty acres.
And the other point I guess I would make is that we have it listed here as C, conditional means they have, uh, this is permitted by right. It doesn't have to go to the Board of Appeals to get this approved. If it meets these conditions, it's of right. All I have.
And Ms. Redkey?
When we discuss whether or not there should be building in the R C, um, I, I personally am just not necessarily in favor of it. When I look at what would be required for that building, driveways, septic, parking, the whole thing, that, that, that to me means, it doesn't mean R C. You know, I, if, if we have anything, I think it would have to be more smaller. So, and I don't, I'm not necessarily that building, but the whole concept of what that land is for is, you know, I mean, it's just, it seems it's opposite of what we have wanted it to be.
Okay, who would like to make a motion on this item? We need to make it some, one thing, one way or the other. So, um, who would like to make a motion?
I would be happy to make a motion to make it S C. So that it has to go to the Board of Appeals.
Okay.
And additionally.
So why don't you make, why don't you put it in the form of a motion then?
Okay. Do you want me to, I, I would also like to reduce the, the size of the building.
Go ahead.
I'll start at two thousand, Chris's original recommendation. So my motion is to make environmental, number thirteen, environmental science, research, and educational uses, nature centers, special exceptions with conditional use in the R C district, and to amend the proposed condition number four, to read, no building shall be permitted which exceeds a footprint of five thousand square feet.
Of two, did you say you wanted?
Or of, oh, I'm sorry, you're right. No building shall be permer, permitted which exceeds a footprint of two thousand square feet, and no new lots may be created that are smaller than twenty acres.
Can you repeat that last part?
And no new lots may be created that are smaller than twenty acres. So if they have a lot already.
Ms. Hume, do you have that as a motion? Do you want to reread it, or re, or say it again so we can have a clearer?
Exactly like she said it, but.
All right, Ms. Blackwalder, one more time.
Okay. My motion is to make number thirteen, environmental science, research, and educational uses, nature centers, um, conditional use in the R C district.
Conditional use, or do you say?
S C.
S E. I know you can do it twice.
It's a special, S, S E, special exception.
S C.
S C, I'm sorry. C, special exception with condition.
Yes. Special exception with conditional use in the R C district. Do I need to read all of these?
You need to.
Or only number four?
Well, you're approving one through three, you're just amending number four.
Okay.
But you're, you added, I guess, a number five, which would be no new lots may be created that are less than twenty acres.
Yes.
Okay. Smaller than twenty acres, I guess is how you said it. Okay, does everybody understand the motion? Is there a second for the motion?
A second for the motion.
Kathleen, second some motion. Okay, we're going to have, um, a vote on this motion. All in favor of Ms. Blackwalder's motion, say aye. I'm sorry.
So these are use conditions. Number five interjects, interjects a subdivision standard regulation.
Okay, all right.
And the, um, the standard is already addressed.
It is.
Table of dimension standards that the Planning Commission approved at the last meeting. And so it's there, you can't create a lot less than twenty thousand square feet. So it doesn't need to be replicated, and this just introduces a complexity that.
May we amend your motion to, to discard that last number five, the no new lots may be created that are less than twenty acres? Because he is correct about that, that was in the last.
So maybe I'll state it differently because you wouldn't put a nature center on a seventy-five square foot lot. So maybe I would amend it to say, and will only be allowed on a lot size twenty acres or more.
No, I don't think.
First, I suggest.
You don't, you don't need any of that because if you're changing the footprint of the building, um, and you've made it S E with conditions, I think, Mr. Jakubiak, she's pretty much made enough conditions, correct? One through four. And amending number four, actually.
I don't think it's possible to do that. I, um, I, I, I do hesitate to see that properly, similarly situated, being treated differently within a zoning category.
Okay.
Your, the, the instincts are right in the sense that the standard is achieved through the table. But if it's density you're worried about, or, um, remember, this is going to go through a special exception process where everything's up for review and determination. They even, the board has to find conformance. They even, the board has to find conformance with the comprehensive plan. I mean.
I agree with you. Do you want to withdraw your motion and restate it?
This is special conditions, not special exceptions.
Special exception with conditions.
It's SE.
That's what she said, I think.
That's what she said. It's.
SC.
SC, correct? C as in cat.
M as in.
This is why we went over those before, it's very confusing, actually.
Yes.
But the SC means that it would go to the Board of Appeals with conditions. They would have conditions.
And these are the conditions that are listed here. The Board of Appeals could not invent new conditions. They could.
They can waive those conditions.
Is that right?
They can't waive these conditions.
There you go. That's a good question.
These are sort of the first gate you got to walk through. And then the board could place conditions in the approval that are related to the specific impacts in that location. They might say, as a condition of approval, we're going to require you to plant a buffer here to screen this unsightly view, the rear view building towards the houses. So they can place conditions.
And in the SE category, the Board of Appeals can add other exceptions?
Not exceptions, but they can add other conditions.
Oh, the difference between conditional, SE and SC is really moot.
I don't think it's moot. I mean, it's, it's the planning commission, the town council, really the town council establishing what is, what you have to do to pass go. And you've got to meet these private facet conditions before you even go to the, the Board of Appeals. And then the Board of Appeals is entitled to, just like you, you as a planning commission can impose a condition on your approval if it's rationally related to the impacts that are being caused out there. You know, so conditions are always a possibility for an administrative body here.
Okay, let's go back to Ms. Blackwelder. Did you have anything more you want to talk?
I didn't.
Nothing is ever easy on this commission. Ms. Blackwelder, do you want to withdraw or do you want to, you want to strike out the last part of your motion or how do you want to do this motion?
I would be happy to strike out that last part about the 20 acres.
Okay. So now we re-say, restate your motion as it should go into the record. And then we're going to have to probably re-second it again by Ms. Brawl because you basically are going to have to start all over again. Okay.
For number 13, environmental science, research and educational uses, nature centers, special exception with conditional use in the RC district, subject to the proposed conditions one through three. And number four should be edited to read, no building shall be permitted which exceeds a footprint of 2,000 square feet.
I second.
Okay.
Ms. Blackwelder's motion?
Do we have the motion written in the, as she said, okay, thank you. All in favor of Ms. Blackwelder's motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
We have one nay and the rest aye. Okay, number 14, game, wildlife, nature preserves, conditional use in the RC, subject to the requirements of the district where located, et cetera, that we're going to strike that. Similar conditions, as you can see. Any questions for staff on this item? Ms. Rutke? Chairman Brown?
None.
Ms. Brawl?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would just like to amend number 14 as was amended number 13 for specifically item number three to say, to amend it to 2,000 square feet. I'm happy to make the motion for that.
Ms. Blackwelder, any questions?
I would agree with that. I, I'm, I mean, do we need number one? I just, I think all of these could have all four conditions as amended.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'm going to let Ms. Brawl go ahead and make the motion, please.
Okay.
There are no questions, Ms. Blackwelder. Are you okay, no questions on that one? I guess not.
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Any other issues before we have a motion made here? Okay, go ahead, Ms.
I am.
Yes, sir.
The, you wanted to include all four from the previous.
I mean, I don't, I mean, this one, we would have to edit it a little bit because it says accessory uses shall only be those intrinsically related to the research or educational mission of the principal use. But I don't even know what, I mean, accessory uses, I don't even know what that would be referring to. So I don't want to go down a big, long. I mean, Chris, can you help out?
Accessory use to a game or wildlife, nature preserve?
Well, just what do you mean when you say accessory uses in number one for number 13? What is that referring to?
We've already done number 13. Let's go down to number 14.
Is it, is there a more generic?
Is there a reason why we would need to put it in the number 14?
This was part of the, the bundle of recommendations that Jen, Kathleen came to the commission with. And I just reworded it so it sounded more planner-esque.
Okay.
But, but it said accessory and accessory is, you know, the typical, what we're all familiar with is a shed is an accessory use or accessory building on a residential lot. So it's accessory to the house or accessory to the primary use, which is residential. So you could have a, a tool shed on a wildlife preserve or a bathroom facilities on a game preserve or, or place the store and clean shotguns, you know, as a.
That's what we need, shotgun cleaning. But anyway, Ms. Brawl, did you want to make a motion on number 14, please?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion on item number 14, which refers to game, wildlife and nature preserves. I'd like to have the conditions one through four as indicated previously on number 13. But my only, I have two amendments that, number one, where it says accessory uses shall only be those intrinsically related. And I would like to say to the game, wildlife and nature preserves and educational miss, mission of its use. And I would like to amend number three that would say, no building shall be permitted which exceeds a footprint of 2,000 square feet.
Okay, so if we go down to number 14, let's, why don't you add a number four and include number, you know, the one from above? And why don't we just do it that way, make it easy? So you've amended number three and to 2,000 square feet and number four, you want to add?
Accessory uses.
Number, you want to add the number one?
Yes. And instead of saying research or educational mission, we would put game, wildlife and nature preserves, educational mission of the principal use.
And would this be a special exception with condition or conditional use?
This would be a, a special condition.
Okay.
Let's see.
I'll second.
Okay, so, and that would be an SC. Okay. So Ms. Hume, we've got number 14, the motion. I don't suppose you can repeat it, can you, Commissioner Brawl? Can you, can you, let me see, I'm trying to write it down myself.
You want me to repeat it?
Yeah, if you could. Because I want to make sure she's got it down. She's writing, I'm still writing.
I'd like to make a motion in regards to number 14, game, wildlife and nature preserves, that we add the conditions one through four. And number three would be amended to say, no building shall be permitted which exceeds a footprint of 2,000 square feet. And the addition of number four, which would say accessory uses shall only be those intrinsically related to game, wildlife and nature preserves or educational mission of the principal use. And this would be an SC.
Okay, and we have a second by Ms. Blackwelder. So we've got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
There's, everybody put your right hand up so that we've got to count. And then we have nays.
Just, just for the record, the reason I'm a nay is because as we keep, continue to ratchet back on the available uses that these private property owners can use their property for.
Right. I think, appreciate that.
And the, if, if the town wants to purchase this property and make it into parks, recreation, wildlife preserves, whatever, the town can do that at any time. But I, I think we are potentially setting the town, well, by adopting this 2,000 square feet standard, continuing to ratchet back on potential uses that private property owners can use their property for, we decrease its value and potentially subject the town to challenges.
Okay, thank you for your explanation. Okay, let's go to number 15. Public building or recreational facility owned and operated by the Chesapeake Beach or other government, governmental agency, conditional use in the RC district. And again, we have the same conditions. Any questions for Mr. Jakubiak on number 15? Ms. Rutke? Mr. Brown?
Chesapeake Beach, the town council can change the rules at any point in time that they want. I'm not sure we need to tell the town that they are restricted in what they can build because they'll build what they want. So I find this to be not very meaningful.
So you want to make it a P, permit it? Is what you?
No, the town will do what the town wants.
And what do you all say down here? Ms. Blackwelder, do you have any questions?
I definitely see Larry's point. I, I think that, I had an amendment to number one. I think that keeping, you know, the conditions and everything in this, this, keeping everything uniform, let it go to special exception with conditions or conditional, I mean, it is the town, or are they really going to build something that everybody's going to hate? But, um, right, maybe. But having the conditions on it and having the town have to, you know, kind of bring it forward.
Go through the process.
Allows them the opportunity to get the public input. So I'm happy with keeping it as the special exception with conditions. I would like to amend number one.
Okay, are we making a motion? Are you gonna, what do you? I was going to have Ms. Brawl ask a question or make a comment. If you're done with your comments right now.
I am done with my comments.
Okay, Ms. Brawl, go ahead and, do you have any comments or questions about this one?
Yes, I do have a comment. Again, yes, certainly the town can do, build what it likes, but I think in, in the consistency of, of our policies and procedures here, I think we have to address these, although it, it might seem silly, but I think to omit it is, then it looks like, did we not actually review it? I would like to also amend number four and change that to 2,000 square feet.
Okay, anybody else want to make any motions? It sounds like Ms. Blackwelder wants to make a motion. I, I know that Commissioner Brown doesn't want to make a motion. Ms. Blackwelder, go with it. Go with the motion.
So for number one, I will amend on top of Kathleen's emotion, motion so that I don't have to remake the whole motion. But I would like to amend number one to say, no building shall be permitted except that which is necessary for the purposes of managing the land or water resources or for the purpose of enhancing the experience associated with providing access to low-impact community enjoyment of the natural environment.
Wow.
I mean, that's basically a bathroom or something.
Wow. Wow. Is there any easier way to say that than we can make it in four words or less? You just want to say bathroom?
It's typed out, so I will give it to Sharon.
Okay.
I.e. bathroom.
Okay, can you just say it one more time? I don't know if you can speak slowly enough so that we can record it down there. Go ahead and say it one more time, please. No building shall be permitted except.
Um.
That which is?
No building shall be permitted except that which is necessary for the purposes of managing the land or water resources or for the purpose of enhancing the experience associated with providing access to low-impact community enjoyment of the natural environment.
We, okay, and is there any other change to two, three or four?
I think Kathleen had those changes.
Well, let's put it in your motion though. You're making a motion, right? So what is number, are you changing number four?
Yes.
Two?
2,000 square feet.
Okay. So in your motion, you are making this SC.
Mm-hmm.
You're changing number one to whatever that was you just said. And number two and three remain the same. And number four, you're changing the footprint to 2,000 square feet.
That's correct.
Does everybody understand the motion? Yes, we understand. Ms. Rutke, do you understand the motion? And you've got the motion. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. And all who will say nay?
You're pointing at me.
I'm, I'm sorry. It's getting, it's getting to be a habit, but that's good. Okay, thank you.
On the roll.
Number 16, parks and playgrounds, conditional use in the RC district, subject to the requirements of the district, et cetera, et cetera. Any questions about parks and playgrounds? I'll start with Ms. Rutke. Chairman Russ, I mean Chairman, Commissioner Rutke, what would you say about number 16? Parks and playgrounds.
Yeah. Um. I would say we would go along with the mission that you called, and I, I feel strongly enough about resource conservation, that I would not mind in all of the, all of these numbers were SC to get an extra set of eyes on it, just to make sure we're looking at all points. And I can have a question, more engaging. Sorry, I didn't bring this up earlier, but to Larry's point, and I've thought of it myself, the homeowners that are affected by RC are all in Wickersham, is that correct? There are more?
Cox, Cox Road and Wickersham.
Yeah, there are a couple of properties along Cox Road that are not in Wickersham that are, that are. But I thought you said home, residential.
She meant residence.
That's why I have property only.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, not, yeah, right. Homeowners.
I'm talking about people that are currently living in a house and are, at one point, sometime ago, being instructed, is there a way to, so that those people are not negative of impact, is there a way to carve out properties owned and lived in, like people that, that we impacted, are doing RC. And, and there's a good reason to have done it. I'm sorry I didn't bring this up sooner, but it just seems to me, what are we talking, a dozen properties, maybe?
Well, are we talking about number 16? Are we, we're going to the map already? We got to finish with parks and playgrounds. About are you talking about a park for these people or what do you, I mean, so if we go back to parks and playgrounds.
I have, no, I have, to answer your question, I don't have any questions about that.
Okay, good. And we don't have any issues here. Anybody have a motion for number 16 or a question? Ms. Blackwelder? Ms. Brawl?
Do we want a bathroom in our parks and playground? I mean, I just, I feel like we could just ditto what we're passing for all of these.
All right. So you want to make number 15's conditions into number 16? That you want a 2,000 square foot piece of property with the park and the playground?
No.
No, you can remove that one.
It shouldn't, so unless anybody has an objection, keep number 16 as, as indicated.
That's fine. I'm.
Let's, let's make it easy. I would like to move that we. I would like to, to move that we, um, we make number 16, parks and playgrounds, SC, with the conditions listed, uh, in, uh, one and two.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Raise your right hand. Okay, we, we have an aye over, we had an aye over here. Okay, you are a witness. We had a unanimous decision on this one. Number 18.
I have to keep you on your toes.
Thank you, and you are doing that, thank you so much.
It was fast, you only could see the motion.
Oh my gosh, thank you, man, that was great. Number 18, sailing schools, boat rentals and storage and similar water-oriented recreation uses. We have questions, do we have questions for Mr. Chukubiac?
Uh, well, I'm, I, I don't have a question. I have an amendment to this one that I wrote out prior to.
A little, okay, anybody have?
I don't necessarily have a question.
Any questions for Mr. Chukubiac? Mr. Brown, no. Ms. Rutke, no. I have one question, and that is, uh, Mr. Chukubiac, we were talking about the storage for this. Did we want to be more precise on what storage meant, or, you remember we were talking about, uh, you know, the outdoor boat storage, whatever, what did you?
I think you were referring to 58, warehousing and storage.
Oh, okay, so that would not, you would not want to or change, uh, or add?
Number 18 has a storage component.
It does have storage as well. Are we concerned about size of storage? Could we have an Amazon's, you know, warehouse in there instead of just plain storage, or what?
Yeah, well, um, this storage is meant to be related to sailing schools and boat rentals, but if that raises an issue, then you can strike it. Um, it's, it seems a bit redundant. I mean, if you were renting boats and you wanted to build a structure to keep your boats, your canoes out of the weather, it would be boat rental. It wouldn't be storage per se, so, yeah.
Oh, so you're saying, strike storage, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because the real issue here is sailing schools and boat rentals and...
Oh, yes, I see what you're saying. If you wanted storage, that's a whole nother issue. Okay. All right, uh, any other questions before we go to a motion? Do you want to do a motion then, Ms. Blackwalder?
Yeah, I'll do a motion.
Okay, so, um, you heard what, uh, Mr. Chukubiac said about the storage, so we could strike that if that can be part of your motion.
Yep.
That'd be great. So go ahead and, uh, give us your motion, if you please.
Okay, so for number 18, sailing schools, boat rentals, and, strike the word, storage, similar water-oriented recreational use, special exceptions with conditional use in the RC district, subject to numbers one and two as written, and also including the condition, whether Article 10 forest conservation is applicable or not, the removal of trees on the property shall be strictly limited to only that extent necessary to make reasonable use of the property, and the applicant shall submit a plan documenting both existing and planned tree cover, including an inventory of trees to be removed and replaced, and, uh, subject to the condition, no building shall be permitted which exceeds a footprint of 2,000 square feet.
Wait, the, uh, I have a question.
Um, okay, so, question on that motion. I wouldn't second the motion yet, we're confused on it, right?
Um, there isn't a, a...
If you go back up to number 16, she, if you go up to number 16, that, she is taking number one.
Number one, I understand that.
Number one, from 16 and bringing it down to number three.
But I didn't see previously that there was a building as a condition, and now...
Now she was adding, oh, were you adding a building?
Um, I'm, I was just making it mirror. I'm fine striking the building, let me tell you what my concern is here.
Why don't you pull your motion? Pull your motion, can you pull your motion, we'll start all over again.
Okay, we can start all over. So let me prerequisite this, and, um, so when we're looking at these waterfront properties, uh, they obviously have, you know, a different, you know, opportunities associated with them. However, the 50-acre parcel of Randall Cliffs is also waterfront. And, um, so I want the conditions that protect the forest from the other motions included, and then, um...
So that could be your number three?
Yeah.
Right.
So regarding the building, I mean, I feel the same way, a very small building on any of these lots could help with the opportunity to provide recreation. A 2,000 square, maybe, you know, if this is an outdoor school, it's smaller, I don't know, I, I think that it goes to the special, the Board of Appeals, and that helps, that's, that's kind of just my general feeling on all of them. But my main concern is getting the, the tree, um, condition in there, and also making sure that if a building is going to be associated with this, that it does have a condition on it to be small.
Well, uh, an accessory building is allowed, though, Mr. Chukubiac, correct?
Always allowed.
It's always allowed, so the accessory building is always allowed anyway, and I think that's what you're referring to.
Sure.
So I don't think you really even need that motion. If you're talking about a little, uh, shed or something for them to, you know, do their processing for their boat rentals, whatever, that's still permitted, that's still allowed.
Okay.
So I don't, you're talking about a, like a big building for a, you know, go and sit in the classroom and learn about, you know, how the wind moves and stuff, but...
Sure.
I don't think that's what you're talking about, you want there. You want the shed that they can do their, you know, accounting in.
Uh, yeah, right.
Okay?
Shutter bathroom, yeah.
So that doesn't need to be included in this motion, correct?
No, but are you going to include the motion that limits building size to 2,000 square feet?
I don't think I have the votes for that.
Well, do you want to have a building of any size larger than an accessory building on that property?
Oh, well, what I can say is, um, accessory uses shall be only those, this one up here, so I'll do, I'll do that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
But why are we adding a building when there wasn't?
I don't have to add a building.
When, yeah, I don't, I don't think we should make it as a condition at all, I, myself. I, it wasn't mentioned previously, and I, I think...
Accessory building is already allowed, so I think that's what her intention is, is that not going to?
But I wouldn't make a footnote, a condition of the no building with, now we are adding back to the, the footprint of 2,000 square feet. If it's already inherent in it, then why specify it?
Okay, do you want me to?
Yes, now can you start your motion all over again?
Okay.
Please.
Um, for number 18, sailing schools, boat rentals, and, strike the word, storage, similar water oriental, oriented recreational uses, add the condition, whether Article 10 forest conservation is applicable or not, the removal of trees on the property shall be strictly limited to only that extent necessary to make reasonable use of the property, and the applicant shall submit a plan documenting both existing and planned tree cover, including an inventory of trees to be removed and replaced, and, um, the following condition, no building shall be permitted except that necessary, no, not that one.
Yes.
The accessory one. Accessory uses shall be only those intrinsically related to...
Sailing schools.
Sailing schools, boat rentals, and similar water-oriented recreational use.
I second the motion.
And that was SC, correct?
Yes.
You did say SC, okay.
Just to be clear, I, I, I want to make sure I didn't confuse you. If the accessory building is 3,000 square feet, that would be okay?
Not, not with me, but...
So you're suggesting we put a limit on it?
I understand why you would not apply the same standard, especially if you've said that the Randall Cliffs, which is waterfront property, is forested, and, I just, I, I thought maybe when I explained accessory use, I might have taken you off the deep, and I didn't want to confuse you.
Okay, well, my, I, my thought was, you're talking about a small, little, you know, hut, a shed, is what you indicated to me, but it's not...
Well, then we would need...
It says sailing schools, boat rentals, I mean, sailing schools could be literally...
I think I agree with Chris.
Okay.
I think that's, I mean, otherwise we could get anything.
Okay, so then number four, then you want to add another condition?
Or if somebody wants to amend it, just say there's no building, but I think we either need something that says no building at all, or something that says only 2,000 square feet.
Uh, why don't we be consistent and just keep it the 2,000, and let it go to the SC, you know, condition with exceptions, and see what happens? So then you would also then add number, it would be number six, right? Is that number six?
That would be four, right?
Because it'd be number four.
Yeah, because number one of the motion is whether forest conservation is applicable or not, the removal of trees, that would be one, number, the previous number one under 18 would then become two, use shall be limited to waterfront properties, and two shall become three, and then we're adding number four, which would say no building shall be permitted. Is that right?
Yeah, you make the motion, because I think you guys are the building people.
Okay, now you have to amend a motion, because she seconded the motion.
Right, she seconded the motion.
You seconded your motion.
And now you're amending it to say no building.
So now you want to make it, now you want to amend her motion?
Okay.
Okay, so now we have, now what is your amended motion?
My amended motion for number 18, sailing schools, boat rentals, and similar water-oriented recreational uses, um, that we would have, um, SC use in the RC district, and it would have point one, requirement one, forest conservation is, refers to the removal of trees on the property shall be strictly limited, um, shall I continue to read the whole thing, or do we?
I think we have that.
We have that.
Then, um, number two would be the use shall be limited to waterfront properties, or
to properties that are contiguous to and functionally connected with waterfront properties. Then number three would be the addition of impervious surface coverage shall be strictly limited to only that amount, dot, 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 I think you know. And then number four would be no building shall be permitted.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that motion. Okay, let's clear up the amended motion. Does everybody understand the amended motion? Um, Kathleen, you want to go over the amended motion again? It's confusing, but let's try and do it.
Okay. My motion in regards to number 18, sailing schools, boat rentals, and similar water-oriented recreational uses, uh, it would be SC use in the RC district, and subject to the requirements of the district where located. Number one, the requirement would be forest conservation is applicable or not, the removal of trees on the property shall be strictly limited to, would you like me to read the whole?
No, I think we have number one, yeah.
Okay, number two would be the use shall be limited to waterfront properties, or to properties that are contiguous to and functionally connected with waterfront properties. Number three would be the addition of impervious surface coverage shall be strictly limited to only that amount necessary to enable reasonable, dot, 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 use of the property. And number four would be no building shall be permitted.
Okay, so does everybody understand that motion? And, um, we're going to go ahead and vote, so I'm waiting for Mrs. Blackwalder to be ready to vote. All in favor of Kathleen's amended motion, please raise your hand. There's four, and those opposed? Okay, so the amended version does, uh, go forward there. Do you have all that, Ms. Hahn? Do we?
Yes, I have. I think she has a headache. What, I'm, if I'm reading body language.
I wish I had had that on video, I'll tell you, I wish you could have turned around and...
Sharon, you were right, and you did get my nay vote.
I did.
Yeah, she had that down before we even finished the motion.
Maybe we need to auditorily say yea or nay, and then you don't have to look up.
Okay, let's, I'm sorry, let's keep moving on. We have aquaculture. Uh, Mr. Chukubiac, do you have any explanations for the aquaculture? I think this was more for, um, um, Ms. Hahn, who wasn't really understanding what that was, if I recall correctly, but I do, explain it to everybody, make sure they understand what that means.
This is number 52.
Number 52, aquaculture.
It's, um, the cultivation of seafood, that often benefits by an association with the water. Um, there is an aquaculture operation happening at, um, Abner's right now, in the RC zone. It's part of the oyster cultivation, uh, that's resupplying oyster beds in the bay. Um, it's a, seems like a perfectly suitable use for, uh, grounds that are waterfront and, um, are in maritime or waterfront type of uses.
Does he have a lot of struck, building structure that goes along with that? I haven't really looked at that. I mean, there's not a lot of building that goes along with that or anything?
No, not with that particular part of his operation, it's very small. There's a series of tanks that are sit on the upland part, there are piers that go out into the water, and that's about it. Uh, of course, he has other operations there where he might use for storage, you know, the shared operation, so a typical, new aquaculture facility might have a small building. Um, I just don't know, but this, the current one is very low-impact.
So would you, uh, think that you would need a condition on here about a building size or anything? Could somebody else come in here and say, yeah, on Randall Cliffs, or someplace, oh, I want to build a fish hatchery or something? I mean, is it something like, that possible?
It's theoretical.
Theoretical. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Chukubiac? I think, uh, Ms. Blackwalder, you're looking puzzled.
Um, no, I mean, I don't know how to make it, like, my vote or my preference would always be just to copy whatever we did with number 13 to all of them. I do want to add this forest conservation condition to...
This next one as well?
Each one of these. And then I do want to add something about a building. So my something about a building...
Okay.
Would probably just stick with the 2,000, and then somebody would need to amend it. So I don't know how we make that go fast, but that's...
Why don't you go ahead and, is anybody wanting to say anything more or ask any more questions before we have a motion? You look like you want to say something.
Yes, uh, I, uh, if it's, I don't think I've made it clear, I support resource conservation. Um, I consider the bay to be something important, and Abner's, uh, specifically, to use them as an example, they've asked for a, a lease of property out in the bay to, uh, to grow oysters. Oysters will clean up the bay. If they want to build a 10,000-square-foot building on Fishing Creek so that they can clean the bay, I'm all in. So, I don't see, uh, it's a small industry, it doesn't have, uh, right now, it's a dying industry, but, uh, if it were to expand, I would encourage that, and I would hope that, uh, aquaculture becomes a, a big thing here. And so I, I would oppose, I will oppose any restrictions on, uh, the use of their property for aquaculture.
Thank you for that. Okay, so do we have, would you like to make a motion, or, who wants to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion that we adopt what's written here. Do I need to read it? Well, with the, uh, one exception of, uh, subject to the requirements of the district where located, um...
I would like to amend...
Well, I just, did you actually, that's your motion?
So I'm making a motion that we adopt number 52, aquaculture, conditional, conditional use in the RC district... use in the RC district, subject to the following, that is deleting that portion that says the requirements of the district where located. And the two, uh, conditions are the use shall be limited to waterfront properties or the properties that are contiguous to and functionally connected with waterfront properties. Uh, the addition of impervious surface coverage shall be strictly limited to only that amount necessary to enable reasonable use of the property. And where feasible, pervious surfaces should be, should be used, correct that, as an alternative.
I'll second, I'll second that motion. Any questions or issues or, uh, shall we take a vote?
I would like to move to amend Larry's motion to include, um, a condition that says whether Article 10, forest conservation is applicable or not, the removal of trees on the property shall be strictly limited to only that extent necessary to make reasonable use of the property and the applicant shall submit a plan documenting both the existing and planned tree cover, including an inventory of trees to be removed and replaced.
Mr. Brown, would you entertain that as a friendly addition to your motion or should we just go ahead and make it a, amend the motion entirely? I can go ahead and, I'll go ahead and second, we'll just make it a simple amending the motion. I'll go ahead and second that. So basically it would be, um, what's written down here, including the issues about the, the trees. The trees, the forest conservation issue. And do you know what we're referring to when we talk about the forest conservation, that particular one amendment there?
I do have a question for Chris.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I just want to, and this is only because obviously the Abner property is, if, there's nothing really to conserve, you know, in the way of environment really left. But how big can aquaculture get? Because you would have a competing interest if you were talking about that 50 acre parcel of, at Randall Cliffs. You would have the preservation of the forest versus the aquaculture. So is that anything that we should address in some way?
Well, um, the standard that you just came up with. I don't know how.
I don't know a lot about aquaculture.
I don't know either. We know what exists today. We don't know precisely. I mean, it, it seems to me that apart from, I mean, if it became such a big facility, it could, it was in a forested area, it could mean removal of forested sites.
I mean, the Board of Appeals could weigh that because this is going to be a special exception, correct?
This was conditional. Larry's motion was conditional.
Okay. Then I would also be amending it to be a special exception with conditions, just because we don't know. And, and I would hate to have the entire Randall Cliffs forest area wiped out for a big operation.
Not possible because that area is protected as a natural heritage area?
Thank you, Chris.
And also, as you know, there's steep slopes, there's cliffs that lead from Randall's cliffs down to the water. Practically speaking, I don't know that we see a waterfront development happen there. So don't be too afraid of that.
Okay. I still would like to amend to make it a special exception with condition, just to get that last line of defense. I can't imagine that the Board of Appeals would deny a good use.
Would that impact Abner's if we went to a different?
Wanted to expand it, uh, if you wanted to.
Okay.
Build a small building associated with it.
Okay.
You would have to go to the Board of Appeals.
All right, so your motion then, which would be to amend, uh, Chairman, I keep calling you Chairman, you should be Chairman, why don't you over here and sit and change, Commissioner Brown? Yeah, he's, he's thinking, it's lucky stars, he's over there. So you amended Chairman Brown's to be SC.
Correct.
And you are, um, uh, the first two are the same and you're including the forest conservation issue, that forest conservation. And then, uh, you had a building, you had a building not to exceed 2,000, is that correct?
I didn't add that part.
We didn't add that part.
I leave that up to Board of Appeals.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, so we have the three conditions, one, two, and then the forest conservation would be the third one, and it's an SC. Okay, I need to have our show of hands, all in favor of that amended motion.
Clarification, there's no building.
There's no building in this one?
No building restriction.
There's no building restriction, right. The special, the Board of Appeals.
Board of Appeals would determine that.
Would be in charge of the restriction or assessing it.
Would this also require a site plan and coming to the planning commission? So we're adding multiple layers, full employment for the.
Full employment for all the commissions. Full employment, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, we got unanimous on that one. Now we go to number 58. Warehousing and storage and associated with permitted marine commercial activities. Mr. Jakubiac, do you have anything you want to add to that one?
Yeah, this is, the warehousing, um, is the concern because it strikes us as industrial use and you're not allowing industrial uses. So, and the storage that is permitted, I think that you have in mind outdoor storage, in other words, storage that wouldn't require.
So you're saying strike the warehousing and insert outdoor storage in association with permitted marine commercial activities?
Right. If the commission's concerned about these buildings.
If you're concerned about the buildings, exactly.
If you're not concerned about buildings and see it as part of a maritime operation, then I wouldn't use the word.
Okay. So would anybody, did everybody hear Mr. Jakubiac's thoughts about striking out warehousing and putting in outdoor storage? Because I know that everybody was concerned about warehousing and all that, in that area. Well, not everybody perhaps, but some people were, I know. Okay, so, um, do we have any other concerns or issues to bring forward to Mr. Jakubiac? Ms. Redkay? Uh, Mr. Brown?
And so outdoor storage would include the, uh, buildings similar to what, uh, Mr. Donovan sent us.
Oh, that's a, that would be a building.
Well, it's not enclosed. It's out, I mean, the boats are exposed to the weather, to the environment.
Is there a cover over the structure?
Yes.
There's a definition of building in the code and it means four-sided enclosure with a roof.
Well, these, these buildings are three-sided, as I.
Right.
Saw the picture.
Yeah.
And there are, there are others that, if you've been down to Florida lately or any time, frankly, uh, it doesn't have to have a cover over it. It's the benefit of that is that you're able to store many more boats on a much smaller footprint. And it doesn't necessarily have to have a roof. Like, doesn't have to have any walls.
Wouldn't that be the outdoor storage? Wouldn't we come back to the outdoor storage?
But I'm questioning, what is outdoor storage?
Be specific on the outdoor storage, that's an interesting point.
Question for the commission is, do you have reservations about structures being built within this area or not? If, if not, then I would eliminate the whole reference to outdoor and just allow the marine operations to put the storage, store their boats the way they feel.
You know, this would, this would be similar to the parking lot, the Rod and Reel, it would come to the planning commission with a site plan and the public would get an opportunity to comment on it and we would have essentially a hearing on it, right? Oh, so the whole structure, size, shape, color, flags, whatever, um, will be discussed at a future point. So by giving the, the potential builder, there's a little more flexibility, we may find something that we find attractive or otherwise.
Any other concerns, issues, questions?
Um, I have kind of a different concern with this. Like, I do want to add that forest conservation clause.
Okay.
But then I also don't want the forest to be cleared to do this.
Sure.
So, um, I mean, I would rather say something like, um.
While you're thinking about that, Ms. Brown, what are you, what are you thinking? I mean, I know that you, I know what you're thinking. But go ahead and say it.
Well, I just, um, I shut her at a 10,000 square foot building to store boats, whether it's got walls or not, um, I, you know, I just think that, uh, to my mind, it's changing the whole flavor of the small town charm of the town. It's, it's becoming a, uh.
Mission.
Well, not necessarily a little sleepy fishing town, small town charm, it's becoming a, uh, if we're going to have a building that's going to mirror, um, the parking garage on the other side, that it changes the whole complexion of the, of the town.
I would say, I, I do agree with Kathleen in that the resource conservation is, is not an, an industrial district. You know, we have the 85% open space right now, it's still there, stuff like that. But I, I agree with you that using it as an industrial district is not correct. If we want to put something back in maritime commercial, then we should do it. But.
Industrial, do you mean commercial?
Well, just any commer, so, okay. So boat storage and, and a big operation, um, as described with, you know, multiple tiers of boats and, you know, that is a commercial enterprise. It's not a resource conservation enterprise. So I don't think that we need to be looking at these resource conservation uses in a way that we are denying somebody a certain level of use. The resource conservation area is meant for resource conservation, it's not meant for commercial uses. So I don't think we need to be overly concerned with, you know, allowing the moon in resource conservation. That's why I'm saying I agree with Kathleen on that point. I definitely don't think we should clear the forest, that's my main thing. You know, a lot of these areas I didn't think should become resource conservation. So I, you know, some of the maritime things I kind of thought we should be rescuing a little bit. So I'm here nor there on that. I want.
Do you want to make a motion on number 58?
Well, I'm, I, the only motion I'm going to make, and I will support whatever you guys decide regarding everything else, but the motion that I want to make is to add the condition, clearing a forested land to accommodate the use is strictly prohibited.
Okay, say that again.
Clearing a forested land to accommodate the use is strictly prohibited.
Clearing the land. So you're not, you're not, you're not reusing the other one that we've just had then?
No, because that one kind of allows you to clear the forest.
Clearing the land, a forested area.
Clearing a forested land to accommodate the use.
Is strictly prohibited.
All right, so are you making a motion then? Is it, is it going to be limited to those three? Are you adding another condition or?
That is my motion, I'm not going to add somebody else's condition.
And that would be SC.
SC.
And you're.
It already is SC.
You're leaving the warehousing, you're leaving the word warehousing or were we using what Chris was just talking about?
I do not want to weigh in on that. I, like I said, I leave that to the rest of the commissioners.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to, uh, approve number 58 with an SC condition and, or an SC designation and include, including, uh, no clearing of the forested land to accommodate, uh, these uses, or, actually, let me just, clearing the forested land to accommodate these uses is strictly prohibited.
Correct.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and second that. Do we have any other comments or anything or can we make a vote?
I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Jakubiac a question. In the maritime commercial district, we have on our chart, have it marked as SE, and we're saying in resource conservation, it's SC. So can you describe what, how, how that will, what the difference is between how it'll be handled in the maritime district and how it would be handled in the resource conservation district?
Maritime district, an applicant would go to the Board of Appeals to get a special exception and the board would review the project, follow the standards and the zoning ordinance for processing a special exception. In the resource conservation.
Special exception to what?
Sorry?
What are they getting an exception to?
It's just called a special exception. It's, it's a term of.
Well, it's just, just another review that they can impose whatever rules they want on it.
Well, not necessarily.
I'm, I'm trying to understand what the difference is between these two processes because they're clearly different in the two columns, SC and SE.
They both go to the Board of Appeals and they both have to be approved by the Board of Appeals. One though has to, the one in the resource conservation has to meet these additional higher standards as, as a condition for getting approved. Within the maritime district, you, you don't have to adhere to those standards, simply go to the Board of Appeals for your review.
They could impose these standards.
They could. If it made sense, I mean, if they were, it was relevant to the proposal, where they could add additional standards.
Thank you. Ms. Redkay, anything that you would like to, before you vote? Or is there any, any changes or, nope? And, okay, so all in favor of Ms. Blackwalder's motion, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
And we did make that SC, correct?
It was SC.
It already was SC.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, there we go on that. Now, thank you, we got through that one. That took us a while. Okay. Now we're going to go to, um, let me find my thing here. Now we're going to go to H, quickly, let's go to H. And H is, um, do you want to give us any lowdown on number H or letter H, Mr. Jakubiac?
Well, the commission's had it for a while. I would hope that there's not much discussion here. It's basically a requirement that, um, that housing developments with 10 or more housing units provide amenities on the required open space. Uh, and for folks who may not have this, uh, the standard is for any proposed development of 10 dwelling units or greater, the development plan shall provide details on the recreational amenities to be constructed or installed by the developer in the common open space for planning commission approval. Such amenities shall be suited to the needs of the residents of the development.
Any questions or comments?
I have a comment.
You have one, Ms. Blackwalder? Yes, go please.
I just want to comment that this is less a dimensional requirement and more of a condition. So I would just say that we would make this, um, a condition for multi-unit dwellings.
And all conditional uses.
Yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So make a multifamily...
Can you explain how that would be applied?
This is, it's perfectly fine in this, this situation. This is where one would expect to find it. This is a typical approach. The multifamily has a variety of use. If you can have three units, it's multifamily. This is only dealing with 10. For the sake of expediting moving through, it serves no public interest advantage to move it, to, to make it a condition. I just don't know why the planning commission would spend much time on this question at all.
Okay, any other comments?
Um, I mean, I disagree. I think that multifamily dwelling units and, you know, assessing of this, um, the accommodations associated with them is something that, you know, should be a condition of whether they can build it or not.
This is a requirement of approval.
It is a requirement of approval.
Deliver this. This is a standard. This, this is, when you get the site plan, you can get to that page that shows the open space, and it's like, do you have a playground or park benches or whatever, tennis court? No, no approval.
What if it's, I mean, I guess this is my, my druthers with the, the multi-unit not being conditional on certain things. Um, so say they give a site plan, and, let's see, I mean, I, I've been through site plan review, and it's, it's a lot quicker than I'd like to see it be, but, um, you know, what if, what if we don't like their playground, then what?
Well, we, we have the option to, planning commission has the option to make changes, correct, on this?
So then we just have to disapprove? That's, that's what it would be? Because it's permitted.
It said here in the, the standard clearly says, not only do you have to provide open space, but you have to make sure you approve, you have to invest in providing amenities in the open space. By that, we're even going to make it so that we have to approve what you're going to put in the open space. You couldn't ask for anything better than this. This is the bold standard. Stop here while you're ahead. This, this means every multifamily development over 10 delivers a, an approved park.
No, I agree. This is, this is great. This is great. I do agree. I, I guess my question is, is process-oriented, C versus P.
Well, I'll tell you what, we're going to stick to this process because we don't have time to go into the C, because we've got a lot more to accomplish tonight. Ms. Brought.
Do you want that answered at some point?
Ms. Brought, anything on this?
Yes, I just have, um, if Chris could clarify for me, number four talks about proposed development of 10 units, dwelling units or greater, and then, and then number seven, is number seven the minimum? And it says, the common open space requirement of this section applies to developments with three or more housing units. And up there, it's, number four says, development of 10. So I, I'm just trying to understand what the difference is.
If it's three to nine units, you still have to provide the open space at a rate of 1,000 square feet. You don't have to provide a plan for amenities on the project. You can, some developers would definitely do that for the benefit of their, for sales. But you only have to provide the improved, uh, open space and have it approved by the planning commission if you have 10 or more.
Okay. Um, my question is, where did we come with 10? Where did you come up with the number 10? Is it just, you just, the, the thing I'm concerned about is that even if you have five dwellings, you've got kids in those dwellings that don't have a place to play in this town, except this one little tot lot. Is it so onerous that we ask somebody who's going to be developing five or six dwelling units to put in a tot lot? Is it that onerous?
Yeah, it could be really onerous, because it could be seniors who buy it.
Well, I mean, or, or whatever amenities, or whatever type of facility it is. I mean, it could be...
I think, I think part of it is, if you have a, what do we have, three, three units, then they would have to have a HOA or similar, um...
Well, over 10.
To maintain it. But if it's over 10, then you have, it has to be maintained by an HOA or some similar entity, I think, is the way I read this.
Well, the common open space has to be maintained by an HOA, whether it's three, three or more, any three or more. Somebody's got to maintain it.
But some type of...
Some time, some, some type of...
But you wouldn't get to a matter of scale until you got to...
Some type of thing.
This sort of reflects where, you know, the, the public interest is in ensuring that there's open space. If there's just a few lots or a few units in a small apartment building, um, it's, it's just a hard thing to have a developer design amenity package for just a small cluster of units, a handful of units. But when you get big, then you, you see that it's, it's worth the while to invest in it because there's multiple users. You can begin to get a sense of who you're marketing the project to. And you, and, yes, there is a sense of arbitrariness to it, but it just as easily could have been 25.
Or five. Okay, anybody else? Ms. Radke, what do you have to say?
No, what, what Chris says makes sense to me.
Okay, and Mr. Brown, you made your comments. Okay, would anybody like to make a motion? We're just looking at number four. Is that correct? We're just approving number four, nothing else? We've already approved everything else on there, it's just number four, correct?
Yeah, you, actually, you proved this, you accepted it to send to the public hearing. It didn't have number four. Number four is in response to what you heard at the hearing.
Yeah.
Or what you gleaned.
Yeah.
So, um, approve the whole thing, if you would.
Can I just ask, I'm, I'm sorry, but as a process question?
Quick, quick question, please.
I know.
Yeah, right.
Um, I mean, how do we gauge the standards? Like, okay, so in your recommendations for conditions on multi-unit developments that you proposed previously, if they say something like, the planning commission finds that blah, 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 as, you know, part of the process in this section that you mentioned, what does that, that, that is essentially conditional use? Because, I mean, I, I guess I'm just having a trouble just understanding what our discretion is based on where we put the conditions in the code.
You have more discretion in having a standard like this here, because you make it a condition essentially of site plan approval. You're, you're reviewing it, you're reflecting on it, you're making a determination if that's in the right location, if it's in a safe location, if it's above flood stage that provides amenities that support the community. If it's just a use condition, then, you know, check the box, and, and you, you've got the use, it's permitted. This is a, this is a, a detail of, of review. It has to be reviewed and engaged with, and, and that's what a planning commission does. The town council will set the standards about what gets to you, and then, when it's here, then you use your discretion, your judgment to, to make it work.
Okay.
So is multifamily allowed in this zone? Okay, it is. If you're going to do multifamily, you have to deliver this and demonstrate to the commission that it is an acceptable arrangement, that it, it's, it's in the right place, it's, it's usable, the, the open space that is.
And we would have the discretion of disapproval based on, well, we would just, we could just disapprove this, and they'd have to come back and give us a better this, in this situation.
You could say, we have the following comments that need to be resolved before we're able to approve this. And assuming the comments are reasonable, and they provide direction and clarity to the applicant to respond to, then you're okay. But you can't just say flat out, we disallow this.
No, I know, that, that's, that's more my question.
Except they say, no, we're not going to provide a park.
Say no, then you're not approved until you do.
They might be in the code. Or we're not going to show you an approval package, an improvement package with the park. And you say, we're not even going to accept your application.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody. I would like to make a motion. I'd like to move plan recommendation H in its entirety. If I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Wait, 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 wait. I just want to clarify something. Is, oh, quest H, you want to remove it?
No, I'm moving it.
Moving it to approve.
Moving to approve. I'm sorry, did I, I'm making a motion to approve recommendation H as, as written.
I thought you said remove. I was like, wait a minute.
As written. Excuse me if I'm, I'm having a frog. So I have a second. Who seconded, who seconded that motion? Thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Let's put that to bed, and let's go to number, the next one is, uh, number, well, it's considering vote on plan recommendation HI, it's group homes. Mr. Jakubiec.
Um, I thought that this was going to be removed from the agenda.
Well, actually, we wanted to bring it because I wanted to let people know that we, in light of a lot of information that we did receive from you last night, and a lot of issues that we have to talk about, that we will probably address them in a workshop at the end of October, if that's okay with you. So I just want to let you know that we're not pushing it away, but we're not going to address it right now, but we're going to keep it as a, and it's currently an SC, correct, Mr. Jakubiec?
It's currently an SE.
It's a S.
Special exception, SE.
So we need to move it back into that designation? Because I think we took it out of that designation.
Took it out of that designation, thinking that you have a serious condition.
Exactly. So we need to, so we can't take it off the agenda, because I need to, we need, somebody has to make a motion to move it back into the S.
I would like to make a motion to move group homes back into the SE category in the...
It's number 20.
Table of uses. Table one.
Yep.
Okay.
And it's number 20, I believe you said.
Yes, it is 20.
It's number 20 in the table of uses.
Table, Texas Amendment 11, a new table one, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, so did everybody understand Mrs. Blackwalder's motion? It's going to be SE as an elephant. Um, and we have a second.
I second.
We second the motion, and raise your right hand. If you're all in favor, raise your right hand, please, to take group homes and move them back into the SE. Mr. Brown, do we, we have a, we have a unanimous decision? Okay, very good. Okay, so we got that one. And Ms. Hom, we got that down as a motion. Okay, very good. Now, we're going to the zoning map, proposed comprehensive amended zoning map. Mr. Jakubiec, what do you think?
Well, members have the zoning map in front of you.
Yes. Yes.
Sharon, is this thing supposed to work when I plug into it? Is there something you need to turn on?
If you just plug it into that, it should come up on this. It doesn't.
The, there, there are two issues before the, the planning commission, I think, on this particular map. And there may be others, obviously, that you have, but that have been presented from the public. One is the, um, the designation of the, um, kind of the open spaces and, uh, forest conservation areas in Richfield Station as resource conservation versus residential plan community. The current draft calls for them to be resource conservation. Mr. Devlin, Joe Devlin, representing the developer of Richfield Station, has made the point that, uh, two points. One, there is acreage that is not platted yet. It was contemplated to be developed, but it was not platted. It's the part of a subdivision, a plat called Streamwalk Way. And that Streamwalk Way is kind of the extension of the existing Streamwalk Way. Streamwalk Way dead ends, but on the plans, and if you look in the land records, the platted lots are there, uh, it extends out into the forested area, has a kind of a bit of a hook in the cul-de-sac. And that is shown on the zoning map as zoned RPC, okay?
Does the current zoning map shows it as RPC?
Yes, because that has been platted, it's a recorded plat.
And you say forested area, you don't mean it's in the FIDS?
Correct, that is not in the FIDS. No, that's, now, there is a part of that subdivision that was not planted that extends into a forested area, not FIDS, that has 13 lots, uh, or proposal for 13 lots. And that area, that parcel, is designated as resource conservation or, or maps, which effectively means, which would effectively mean that it cannot be developed or put to residential use, and would have very little other uses, as, as we know.
But, but when you're saying it's resource conservation now, but it was, was it resource, was it, it wasn't in the FIDS, was it resource conservation?
No, it was never, it, it's, it's currently zoned RPC.
Okay, so, so essentially, I think what I'm hearing you say is that Mr. Devlin has been accurate in his presentation.
Yes, yes, he's been accurate in his presentation with respect to that, that I'd like to deal with that one first. And there's an exhibit that he provided that's, that you all have. I don't seem to have a copy of it.
Is it, is it this one right here?
Yeah, so the, if I could just approach real quick.
Yes, please. May approach the bench.
Thank you, Judge Judy.
Wow, now you have the law degree.
I like being elevated to Mr. Brown's. Not this one.
The one that lined in red?
This one?
Yeah.
Okay, that was...
Hold on.
This one?
Oh, wait, 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 wait.
I think I gave one to all of you.
Thought if we used the big one.
This one?
No, I think that came with our package.
No, this was in our package. This was in our package.
Would this one help you, Chris? This big one?
Let's see.
Well, this might be, uh, big enough for you.
This is, this is focused on the FIDS critical area.
You're talking about the one on the back of his letter?
Yeah.
That's the one you're talking about?
Yeah, it's a little yellow blur.
Yeah, it's a little yellow thing like this one. Lori, did you see this one, the one with the yellow?
I've seen that one, yes.
It's on the end of his...
Let me start on the side of the commission, yes, and I'll work my way around. I've got copies for him.
So we need more copies.
I'll be, I'll be there in a minute. See the property. Here's, um...
Yes, it's, it's that letter.
The rich field station.
No, yeah.
Streamwalk Way, you see, and then stops right there. See this parcel?
That's you.
That area. This is the area of concern, proposed zoning cause of RPC, or the RPC district. The, the original plan for this proposition included 4% of your, the big, uh...
That was on the original plan for the RPC?
Yeah, well, yes, actually, the original RPC plan.
So are we allowed to, what, what is, what are the rules of that? Okay. Sure. Um, no, I think I can see the gist of what you're talking about.
Here it is. See where Streamwalk Way stops? And they come in the main road, and then it turns to Streamwalk Way, and then it dead ends right there, which just stops, right?
Right.
So there's, there's proposed houses in that cluster.
At the, at the end of that street?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, and there's a creek behind here?
Yes.
Um...
But the creek is really right through here. This is the main creek.
But my question in regards to this, I drove through that area, and this seems to be, this street is the only one that doesn't have a sidewalk. They...
So you're saying the letters that were written without stating, um, Streamwalk Way or whatever...
Yeah.
Addressed a number of those issues.
Right, but one of them, I mean, every, it's like Housing Street Townhouse is...
Right, but one of them... I mean, every... It's like Housing Street Townhouse is Housing, you know, street with houses. And that's the only one that I could see that doesn't... It's... The street width is 23 and 1/2 feet,
Right.
and there's no sidewalk on either side. Every other street after that, they're like 28 feet, and they have a sidewalk on both sides. And I'm not sure...
Well, anyway, let's...
Well, that was explained in one of the...
Yes.
Calvert County. One, that section required a sidewalk along the narrow street. The other section, something RG4, something RG5, was a couple feet wider for the road and included sidewalks.
Yeah.
Kind of drawing in one.
Okay, so Mr. Jakubiec.
I think what they were saying in the letter, though, was the size of the road does not accommodate the number of houses that...
Right. But is this the issue? This is not the issue that we're really talking about, our sidewalks and all that. We're talking about this little triangle of property that is at the end of Streamwalk is part of now the drafted RC area. That if we made it RC, he would no longer... Or they would no longer be able to develop that area. This little cul-de-sac down here, and this is what our friends have told us when they've come here to talk to us about this. Okay, so... So it's not... It's not what he wants, but it's something that the town might, you know, might enjoy as far as, you know, less development, et cetera. Okay, so we've got that. So that's the one issue.
I have a question about that.
About what?
What we're talking about.
What we're talking about?
We're talking about... We're talking about
That.
whether putting that area in RPC is... Like, you're saying that maybe if we don't want to develop it, putting in RPC or the RC helps. But my question, again, is process. He says he has these 13... What are they, plats? What are they?
13 lots that had been proposed but not approved. They're not part of the...
Well, he doesn't have them.
There's no final plat for those.
Right. He doesn't have them at all. And they... He doesn't have them. They're not approved. So they already don't have those.
Right.
And we don't have to approve them
That's my understanding.
regardless of what zone
That's my understanding.
this is in.
Yes, it wasn't recorded. That's what I've understood, too. Rebooting, not recorded.
Chair, do you want to recognize Mr. Rep?
Yes, why don't we have you come up and tell us who you are? And it sounds like you've got a lot of information.
My name is Mike Repke. I'm sort of the agent for Richfield Station 2 Joint Venture.
Very good.
And Harrison Boulevard and Harrison Court are also lots that have open section roads. There's 55 single-family lots on those existing roads currently in Richfield Station, okay? Open section, same width, works fine. I've seen school buses there and whatever. As far as the 13 lots, we prepared record plats for 54 lots back in 2014. We had 41 of them. We got recorded, and we held back 13. The 13 lots have been prepared. They were signed in 2014 by the planning commission, by the Calvert County, by everybody. We elected not to record them at that time, and we had an issue with earthwork, and we wanted to maybe adjust things, so we...
But you're saying they were approved by this planning commission?
Correct, in 2014. We also have a preliminary plan that was approved back in... I mean, Richfield Station has been around for a long time. I think it was 2009, for all these 54 lots, including the 13 that you're taking a look at now. So it's not as if the 13 lots never existed, and we just have a vacant piece of property there. Of course, in my mind, different from yours maybe, but, you know, we have prepared a record plat. We had got everybody to sign it, Health Department, Calvert County, planning and the planning commission, and it was before another planning commission, and the chairman of that planning commission signed off on it. And I think that was in your package. I don't know. I think Mr. Devlin was going to present that as part of a package. But anyhow, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. I appreciate you clarifying. Thank you so much.
Just a vacant piece of property.
Perfect. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Right, thank you. Okay, so then the next issue. So we have those 13 lots. Then the next issue is what?
Next?
No, I'm talking to Mr. Jakubiec here, because I had a few issues he was going to talk about.
So there are more graphics on that one that are helpful, and they're there, and I just saw them on your... On the diocese. There's...
What made you think to include that in the RC?
I saw nothing to suggest there was improved development there. Certainly, in this case, not a plat. There is a document. There is a plan that is attached to the FIDS agreement that you've seen. It's exhibit 1B or B1, and it shows, if you look carefully, and you really have to look carefully, just because the quality of the image shrunk down to a small size, it shows nine lots, kind of clustered, and then four here, and then two further removed, relatively larger lots. And those lots were obviously contemplated, and the developers is arguing that those are the lots that are addressed in paragraph 1 of the FIDS agreement. And let's just...
I think that was on something. I don't think I have it in any of my...
Do you code?
Now, this letter was copied to the town attorney and to the town administrator. What does the town attorney say about this?
I've not asked him for his advice on it. He's not made a determination. As far as... He has not told me what his determination is, or... It's in the planning commission's realm, and the planning commission can make a determination about it. But I think the planning commission is okay with looking at this property and saying, "This property meets the character of other lands. We've designated it as resource conservation. It's not specifically platted as a series of lots. Keep it as RC." Or you can say, "This is a possibility for additional nine more lots in an area that's already developed, or infrastructure exists already, in a place where there are not many houses ever going to be built again. Why not allow development to take place in this area?" And the provision in the FIDS basically says... It basically says, I don't have the wording in front of me, but this agreement does not prevent the developer from developing those parts of the critical area that are not FIDS. And in the exhibit B1, it shows this area as non... As critical area basically eligible for disturbance.
Has any... Do you know if any preparation has been done on these lots, sewer, utilities, any...
Any infrastructure?
I'm not aware of that. The roads have stopped.
I think we would have heard.
Have a hand in the back.
And yes, sir. Is there any infrastructure? Any infrastructure? Did you hear him okay? Do we need to have him come up and do it in the... You know, we may have to have you further recording. I'm sorry. And you're losing... And so Sam, I'm losing mine, too, so that...
Madam Chair, doesn't he need to state his name and his address?
Reintroduce yourself.
My name is Mike Repke, and I'm the agent for Richfield Station 2 Joint Venture. This parcel was... Is at the end of Valley View Drive, and we have extended by virtue of Valley View Drive being existing sewer lines to the property to handle eight, nine houses, a water line, and we stubbed it. We've also accommodated the area of the configured property as it would go into a stormwater management pond, which is also on Valley View Drive. The piece of property is not within the 199 acres. It's surrounded by the 199 acres, but it is not, you know, it was excluded from the Forest Interior Bird Sanctuary.
When you say sewer and water has been extended to the properties, are you saying it's extended to each one of these platted?
No, no, there's nothing...
A general sewer line, a general water line, which would then be split up when you develop it?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Which feeds into a pump station, which is right there.
May I ask a question, Mr. Robles?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So when it comes to the FIDS clause and the conveyance of the acreage that is associated with the FIDS clause, what is... What is keeping that conveyance from occurring? Because it says, "As a condition of development, the property conveys." So... But what I'm hearing is you are not conveying it. So if you could take us through that, please.
No, I mean, I don't think we have a timeframe for conveying it, but we would certainly like to use the density, which I think is referred to in the agreement, for the nine to eight lots that are within that sliver of property.
Well, the timeframe would be prior to your development, would be when that should be conveyed. It's as a condition of development.
Yeah, you know, I'm not familiar with that. You might be better on asking that question than me.
That's how the town should handle this issue.
Okay, well, let's move on. Thank you. Oh, you have another question? Yes.
Yeah, I have a question, Chris, because I'm really struggling with this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead and see. Yeah.
So it's zoned, I'm back to Wickersham. Just struggling with this. We changed the zoning, and it's going to affect the people that live there.
Dan, can we hold that thought? Because I think we're going to get to that area, aren't we? Aren't you going to get to that?
Oh, but she wants to make a comparison.
Yeah.
Oh, you're going to make a comparison. Okay.
So my thought is, how is that different than our change of zoning to RC on these lots that are there? How is... How are those two things different? Because it sounds like, on the one hand, Wickersham, that we're just saying, "Well, that's the way it is. You know, that's... Done it, and there'll be impacts on you, but kind of that's what it is." So I'm trying to understand what's different about our consideration about that to the consideration of those lots. Are there still a difference? I don't see a difference.
That there is a difference. The... I mean, there's some parts of it is obvious. One, the land in Richfield Station is not developed. There are no houses there now. In the Wickersham situation, in a number of cases, there are houses actually within the RC district as proposed to be drawn. One similarity is that in the Wickersham, there's typically the house that sits on a property or a cluster of properties, and there's additional property in smaller lots. And so those additional lots could be subdivided in some cases, not all cases. Some cases, the land is so steep and wet, and you would never do that. But in some cases, it's conceivable that you could see the removal of the forest and patching up of some steep slopes and building a couple houses in the woods.
Zoning of RC?
No, no, no. Under...
Right, okay, that's my...
Village residential.
I think that's where I'm going with this.
Right.
That maybe everybody else is the same way about it, but we're taking an opportunity away from one group and maybe looking at it differently than other group at Richfield Station. Am I off base here? Does anybody see what I'm talking about, or no?
No, this is... It seems to me it's very similar to what we've done along Fishing Creek at Abner's, which he has property down there, and he's on Fishing Creek, and we've extended the resource conservation to encompass what he otherwise thought he was going to develop as either a marino or aquaculture or something. And we've... We extended it.
Remove that up, yeah. We've removed the opportunity.
Yep. We've changed the existing zoning. We've expanded the existing zoning map, section that was RC.
Okay. Do we want to continue with what you're trying to thought, then?
Well, I don't know. Have I laid out these two issues in Richfield Station adequate for you to say whether you...
Two issues. You're talking about this one area right here. What's the second one you're talking about?
The area to the right of that off... That Mr. Repke was just saying, at the end of Valley Drive. Valley Drive dead ends near the pump station. Infrastructure is in the roadway. The lots have not been platted, but they've been conceptualized by the developer. There's a reference in the agreement, the FIDS agreement, to the extent that the FIDS agreement has an exhibit and that are shown on the exhibit, nine lots. You can count them. They've not been before the planning commission for plat approval. There's no subdivision
What was the significance of being included in the FIDS agreement? Does that mean that somehow those lots are being treated differently from other RC property that wasn't RC?
No. The significance is the developer is arguing that the... At the time that the agreement was structured, it was contemplated and generally understood that an additional line, nine lots, could be developed on the non-FIDS part of the critical area. The developer put a deed restriction, deed restricted this expansive area and had this agreement about protecting it. But it says, "By the way, we still have the ability to develop some additional land outside of the critical area at our density of one unit per 20." Basically, they've got a big parcel of land, and they've aggregated and said they can get nine more lots, and we can fit it in this parcel. But, you know, the agreement doesn't say the town agrees to provide that, those nine lots, or agrees to extend infrastructure, or agrees to keep the zoning in place for perpetuity. Doesn't say anything like that. It just references that. That's sort of the understanding, I guess. And on that matter, you know, I've not gotten an opinion from the town attorney. And right now, this is set before the planning commission on the question of zoning. What's... What do you think is the best, in the best interest of the town, from a land use standpoint? That that area be resource conservation or RPC? Knowing that RPC, you would likely see eight or nine lots. We don't know. We can't prejudge it. They'd have to come to you with a subdivision of plat approval, and you'd go through the review and approval process and public meeting that you'd have. So when Mr. Devlin says, "We want to keep the field level," it basically says, "Don't change anything. Allow us still the right to go through the process, to come to you, to prove to you in the future that this would be an acceptable use of property." That's what he's referring to.
I would like to ask a question of the commission for the record.
Okay.
A question of the commission for the record.
Okay.
Is there anybody on this commission that wishes to rezone in a way that causes the FIDS property to lose its ability to convey?
To continue on as a FIDS property?
So the FIDS property has two components to it. It has the preservation component, but it also has the conveying component. And the conveying component is associated with Richfield Station RPC. So I, in my opinion-
The FIDS and the RPC are two completely separate pieces of property.
No, the, the document references-
Oh, well, one references the other, but there is a, there is a boundary line between the two, correct?
There is not as we speak, no. Richfield Station plus the FIDS is an entire RPC. The FIDS is open space for Richfield Station and it's part of that community. And as a fully platted community, that area cannot be developed. And that is why my motion is not to change it. However, we don't have anywhere near the advisement or the, the understanding of this elaborate situation to, to really make a good, okay.
Would you, would you agree that the town attorney understands this?
Yes, but he's not here at our board, so to put-
And he will advise the town before the town acts on it.
And he's actually already weighing on it.
Well, okay, well, in my opinion, we should not be changing or rezoning a fully platted RPC as a commission and recommending that to the town council.
So you're saying you would, you would change the status back to RPC of that little-
Of all of it, the, the entire, I would not redraw the map of the RPC.
Let's go back to Mr. Jakubiak. The town attorney actually did weigh in on this. We had him at a meeting and at our public hearing actually and weighed in on it. And what did he say?
Bigger question.
On the bigger question. Yeah, on the bigger question, absolutely.
He said that if the planning commission's objective is to affect the remaining open spaces
Right, that's what I remember him saying and he stood there and said it.
But how, how can that be if a fully platted RPC can't be developed further? I mean, even at, even as the RPC, if we leave it in the RPC, those lots that are being talked about, they're not a guaranteed approval. So we can deny that. I want to point you to what was in our file from Todd Pounds. And what he says is, give me one second. He says-
Who?
Todd Pounds. And first of all, I do have a question about that second letter. So the first letter from Todd Pounds, you know, it had the letterhead, it had, you know, everything you would expect from an attorney letter. The second information from him in the file didn't have any of that. It was just one through six or something.
Right, that was answering your questions.
Right. So that was, but was that, that was his entire correspondence or was that, that was his entire correspondence?
That was entire correspondence that referenced your questions.
Okay.
He answered every one of them.
Uh, he did not answer every one of them, but I'll get to that in a second.
The one that I got.
So this is what he says, and this is what is giving me pause about rezoning. "A release of both parties can extinguish a covenant. However, one party cannot. Merging the properties terminates a covenant if the covenant only relates to the other property." Now, the FIDS specifically references the Richfield Station RPC. So if we are going to merge or unmerge the FIDS property, I don't know what that does. And I think that we need to know that before we change the zoning of a fully platted RPC that can't be developed anyways.
You mean that it can't be developed?
It's already fully platted. Everything that is, is allowed in that RPC has been platted. Anything that was extra on top of that, that Mr. Ropke and his lawyer has brought up and has expired, if it's not part of that original RPC, we can deny it, even if it's in the RPC. So I, I don't, I, I do not understand this need to rezone to resource conservation. I think it's making it more vulnerable, but we don't know.
Well, we've had other-
No, we have not settled it.
It's been beaten to death.
We have actually been told by our attorney that it's more protective. So the question is, do we listen to our professionals, Mr. Jakubiak and Mr. Pounds? I mean, I understand that you, you know, I mean, do you have another resource other than, you know, I mean-
Than Todd himself and Chris himself? And then the other-
I mean, we have to, we, as a commission, we have to rely on our professionals to give us the answers.
Okay, but the one question that was not answered is this one. If the FIDS covenant were to be extinguished by the current property owner through legal means, would rezoning the parcel into resource conservation zoning district provide the most protection from development? Or would allowing the parcel to remain as a plat, as platted in the residential planned community district provide the most protection? Because as it sits in the residential planned community, it's open space.
And who would have to approve the replating?
Okay, but the problem is the conveyance, Larry.
No, that's not a problem because he can't, they can't replat it without this commission's
Right, but he can, he can extinguish the conveyance. That's the problem.
It hasn't been-
One-sided.
If the merging, the merging of properties terminates a covenant-
You're getting into legal terms that I don't think you understand.
No, I don't think I do understand them, and I don't think anybody here understands them.
Well, that's why we're taking our recommendations of our attorney and our planner, who are the professionals. And I think we need to continue. Mr. Jakubiak is now, is, is still trying to complete his discussion on, on these issues. We've pretty much talked about the Richfield Station area and those areas, correct, on the RCs?
Right.
And where does it end now? Where does this-
At that lady's house, who wrote us a letter.
Well, no, but I don't know where her house is on this map. Is the cul-de-sac down here-
Streamwalk Way?
That, that we're talking about, the, the bus trying to turn around in. Does it exist? Okay, that's my point.
The road stops right here. It hasn't crossed the street.
Yeah.
This much is already platted.
So, of course-
Yeah, I, I've seen it. I know it, I know it. And I know that-
I have one question for Chris.
Okay, miss-
When he finishes.
Approved.
That's the 2014.
But he has to bring it back to us anyways, if we are to approve it.
This is what was done in 2014. It was approved but not recorded.
Wants us, okay. Thank you. And Larry has a question for you.
So, so Chris, this, when we expanded the resource conservation area in the RPC into the RPC, it was because the commission told you to. But what do you recommend we do in response to Mr. Devlin's request that the map be shrunk in Richfield Station, back to what it currently exists?
I would say with respect to this part, the end of Streamwalk Way, that it be zoned to RPC, just like it is now, and it not be changed to RC. With respect to that other small part there, I don't see, I don't see why it's in the public interest to allow that road to extend up into that really environmentally sensitive area, part of the critical area, clearly meets all the definitions of resource conservation that we generally hold dear. And I don't see a direct link between it and its potential development and the, the agreement, the FIDS agreement.
In the Streamwalk Way, the developer is talking about 50 some odd homes and the other area, the more sensitive area, you said, 14 homes.
No, eight or nine. He, he said eight or nine tonight, and I, I counted nine. It's part of an older document that showed, it was a conceptual document that showed potentially nine lots being developed there.
And Chris, what area is that called again with the eight or nine properties? What area would you call that?
That was, it's, it's, it's on this map. It's called, I guess it's Phase Two Growth Allocation Area. I mean, that's the line that's drawn to it. So it's on the map. That's where it's shaded yellow to indicate it's outside of the FIDS area. It's at the end of Valley.
So your suggestion suggests-
That Block Q?
No, Block Q is, is Streamwalk Way.
Okay. So you're saying that if there was going to be any changes, that you would take the Phase Two Growth allocated area and leave that in the, I'm sorry, that I'd put, keep that in the RC. That's the more sensitive area.
Yes.
And then the other one, you're saying, put that back in the RPC, the Block Q area. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah. I would recommend just confirming the approvals that have been made already. Those 54 lots were anticipated. I mean, when I thought about a Streamwalk Way, I thought about it as a 54 unit development. It just happens that 13 of them are off this cul-de-sac part.
Oh, I see.
And that part has not been recorded in the land records.
And then you said if it's rezoned to the RPC, then it, they will be developed.
They're being developed anyways. 50 lots are being developed anyways, is what you're saying. Is that what you're saying?
No, about 32 or so are being, are presumably going to be developed at some point soon.
Are they already approved? And, I mean, I mean, are they already set? First of all, we had the moratorium hearing. Is this, this is the developer that called you in the middle of the moratorium hearing, correct? Somebody called you right in the middle of the moratorium hearing and you answered. I think it was this developer.
How did you know who called you?
Yeah, that is amazing.
Because somebody made a motion about it. I, I, I will go back, I will bring it to any work session or the next meeting. I will go back and look. Somebody called you in the middle of the, and I think it was this, I think it was about these plats, but I'm not sure. That's why I'm asking you.
I think that's the property off Cox Road. In Heritage and Richfield Station that-
All right, so what's, what's the consequence on that Block Q with those 54 units? If we left him in the RC, it means they could not develop that, correct?
Right. If you left the, the, the sort of this appendage to Block Q or the remaining part of Block Q, it would remain RC. Again, it's an intact forest. You, you have all the bases you would need to say it ought to be RC.
It would be RC.
It's shown in the comprehensive plan as resource conservation. I mean, you wouldn't be stepping out of line and constantly-
We, yeah, so that's what we originally were talking about, so.
There's two things for you to balance, whether you should allow these additional 13 houses.
Now, let's go back.
And the conveyance of the FIDS.
Let's go-
I said, and the conveyance of the FIDS property. The requirement and the risk of merge. So this is my question. If, if we put some of these properties into the resource conservation zone, is that considered a merge? It's not. What would be considered a merge?
Merge, a merge. I don't even know what you're talking about. Now you're, now I'm-
I guess that would mean eliminating a lot line that separates two properties so that they become one property.
And so does that, and that wouldn't apply to an, okay. My second question is, we're talking about the 52 lots. The disposition of those is what? They are already approved and he has, I mean, what, what is the status? Can we not approve them because the road is sized incorrectly?
Well, I don't think that's the case. But no one's asked me. And I don't think there's, the road's an issue. People have different ideas about roads they like to have, but the road would be safe with additional houses on it. There is a subdivision called Streamwalk Way. It was platted and I think it has about 32 lots, and I could count them here. It has not been built, but it would extend from where Streamwalk Way stops now. It would extend over a stream and then pick up a, an area and, and 32 units would be built on it. That's platted. It's in the land records. These are legal lots of record. They exist today.
Those are legal lots of record.
Yeah. So if the developer had a public works agreement with the town to initiate the construction and development of, of the infrastructure, they can start filing for building permits at any point.
So they're not permitted. They're just legal lots of record, much like anything else in the RC zone or any, any, any lot. It's not, those lots are not necessarily permitted for development.
But there's no improvements or houses built.
And there's none-
Or permitted. There are no permits.
And there's, there's none directed by anything. Is that correct? Or, like, we don't have to allow him to approve those lots. Is that, or to, to build the lots or to develop the lots? We, that is not an obligation, a legal obligation to allow him to develop the lots.
The planning commission could rezone these lots to something else. You could re-
And he could do what he wanted. RC, that opportunity is on.
Okay, so if, if we left it in RPC, are we obligated to allow him to develop the lots?
Sure, yeah.
We are obligated. We are obligated to permit housing.
Well, he'd be required to do a site plan and all that other stuff that we would have to approve.
That's what he wants us to do, is return it to our, that's what he wants us to do.
The term obligate is, is kind of strange. The, the, I didn't mean strange. It's hard to contemplate. He, the developer, the owner of the lots would be entitled to file for building permit. And we would generally speaking, be required to approve or permit if it met all, if all the conditions of approval and the standards of the zoning ordinance were met, and it could provide it with water and sewer and all the other issues that we'd go through.
So if you, when you talk about a fully platted RPC or a, you know, when you talk about a master planned RPC, I would imagine what, what all the residents of Richfield Station are saying is that Richfield Station was master platted, much like my neighborhood. They were told that this, that, and the other could not happen, but then it did happen. And that's, that's, that's what everybody's saying. And so I do understand that they were platted and he got approval and there's a certain unfairness to not letting him have approval now. I can see that. But there's also a very big unfairness to that property not conveying, that FIDS property.
Mr. Jakubiak, what do you have to say about that?
You mean the open space that's building a promise-
That 200 acres.
That he hasn't delivered.
But we've already talked about conveying, and that has nothing to do with any of this. So let's go back to where we are right now. There is more that you had to say about this RC. We did the Richfield Station. We have the, a comprehension about that, I think, most of us do. Are we going to get into the other area of the RC that, that we've had testimony about tonight? Let's talk about that, because I know you were going to do something about Cox Road or something.
Yeah.
Talk about it.
So regret that the visuals are not going to be working tonight, but you have your zoning maps, right?
Yes.
I can direct you to, each one of you have something large up there, so you can-
You should all have your zoning, your draft map in your packet. Yeah, you should all have this one. Is the one in our packet going to be sufficient enough for you to talk to us about?
Is that this one?
Yeah, that's it right there. That's the one we should be looking at right now. Oh, no. He's going to give us another map. Are you kidding? Okay, this actually is probably what we need to see. Okay.
This property that's shown, you can see the property that's... Thirty-five, fifty-nine Cox Road. And I included a photograph of the property just because it's, we recognize it, right? If you see the picture...
Yeah, we all own the house.
So look behind it. You see how that drops down drastically? Okay, so what's the best zoning category for something like that, property RC, right? So that's what the map shows, the zoning map shows. But the zoning map also classifies the entire property, three, five, five, nine, as RC. So the applicant, Mr. McKay, has said, "Why zone my homestead RC? It's where I live. I have a single-family house. How am I different than anything else in the RV district?" And by the way, he didn't say this, but I'm telling you, if you look at his property itself, in part because of his graded, but it exists as not a steep slope. The slopes drop off following those lots. So what I'm suggesting is that on the zoning map, those lots that are enclosed by this circle, I mean, this yellow line, be RV1. In other words, take it out of the proposed RC district. Allow the RC district to stay in the area beyond that, that falls down almost two-to-one slope all the way down to the water. Well, we haven't got there yet. We're working our way through.
We haven't got to work this year. Let him finish.
I feel like the map needs to be in our work session, done.
All right, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Jakubiec.
I know.
You're on a roll.
So that's, there's one property owner who's made a case.
Okay. So you can somehow draw the line around his property so that the steep slope part is in the RC, but the homestead is not? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, essentially.
Okay, all right, fine. There, that takes a...
That's what he's asked for. That's what he asked for at the meeting.
Sure.
And that's what I said, that I would advocate for and present to you.
That sounds good. Okay, so then what else do we have here?
Are there any other people? Chris, in that same circumstance, that this individual is, you know, that we would change...
Chris is still working on this, okay.
Yeah, so I'm trying to present this to you in these circumstances.
Is it, can you just show us on this little map here? Because, yeah, can't you just show us on that one right there?
We're making no motions on a map, I hope, tonight.
Oh, no, yes, we're making motions on the map tonight, because I think we can do this, because he's got it, we've got some changes here that we can make.
This is no way to make a motion on a map. We need to see a map.
Well...
Everything on this map, along this area, all the way down to Elm Lane, extending beyond is, down to Elm Lane, excuse me, is shown as RC. However, there are a number of houses in that area.
Yeah.
And so that's the Wickersham subdivision. And I'm just going to zoom in here for a second. Bear with me. The zoning boundary...
Can we just move the zone all the way down to the bottom of where those houses are? Wouldn't that be just simple enough?
Yeah.
And why do we have to?
Why couldn't...
Because you can see it, everybody, you can see the map and see how the line goes up off of Cox Road. If you just drop that boundary down below to allow all those houses, so in other words, Cox Road, here are these houses right below, and I know it's getting down into the wetlands area, but they've got a bunch of houses right in there.
Well, why, why can't we, for that, everybody affected in the same circumstance, why can't we make their dwelling RV1 and the area behind it or surrounding it make that RC? If we're going to do it for one, and there's other, there's fifteen other dwellings that are in the same situation, as soon as we vote to do this for one, then me, who lives next door to the person who just got that, I'm coming to the next planning and zoning meeting and saying, "You just did this last month for my neighbor, and I would like the same exception."
Chris...
I was trying to draw the analogy.
Well...
Yeah, no.
Chris, is that a possibility to just redraw that line down?
Yeah. The most direct way would be to redraw the line from Mr. McKay's property, down and encompass all those properties that are shown there. How...
Don't say how. So that would go over to Elm Street, right? That would go, it would cut...
But I just want to show you something, and if I can approach...
Yes, approach the bench, you know.
Approach the bench.
Yeah.
No, sir, you cannot approach the bench. It has to be a sidebar.
You should ask Larry how this works, yes. Oh, you got your commission, okay, yeah.
Say this multiple times, there's Elm Lane, okay?
Yes, Elm Lane, right.
See these houses, eighty-two oh five and eighty-two oh nine?
Yes.
Those are considered RC on this map.
Yes.
Okay? How are they different than the lots where it crossed? Really not much different.
Yes.
There's some steep slopes, steeper slopes and all that, and forested areas, but still, those are RC. So following the logic that's discussed tonight, carving out those lots all the way down to this right of way, along the marsh, making it RV1, based on the logic that would be applied to Mr. McKay.
The dwelling making it RV1, and then the surrounding area, RC?
Wow.
No, that's, yeah, right. So then you go to continue this direction. You see the topography here, extremely... There's Gary's house, right here, eighty-two oh nine, I'm sorry, eighty-two hundred. And if you treated that the same way, you would draw a proper boundary around those lots, follow the lot lines. And above that, and to the right of that or to the east of that, a lot of property, all the gas and electric.
Right.
And again, a very steep slope here. All this area up here is highly difficult to follow. That would just completely remove that whole hillside.
I don't think this commission wants to take anybody's property and make, and render it valueless. That is not our intention here. We're trying to just protect forested land. So, yes, I think you have a question. Oh, do we have a question out there? You're just scratching your head like I am.
These lots, you allow other people to come, it's just an interjection.
Yes. Since he's doing this, yes, go ahead.
One is spot zoning should not be allowable, and two is contiguous ownership. Your zoning laws requires in some cases that if I own certain, not a property, I got to own other property to make a single legal lot, which will allow you to use it for DVS or heavily sloped areas combined with a property that would allow you to get a variance and build a home. And if you break that, you combine that, that you could combine the RC property with a billable lot. If you took all my lots that are off to the west of my home, part of my driveway is on part of those lots, so it needs a subdivision to get there.
Are these contiguous lots you're talking about that you have?
Yeah, also, these are all tracked together.
I saw...
And I bought them because they were tracked together, because it was an, we had, the previous builder had built my driveway on part of those lots. And so a subdivision at some point is going to be necessary to ever break the bond between the one block and the block my house is built on. And then my house is made up of a couple of different blocks apart of the street and...
Do you know where his property is and what he's referring to? So is there any way to accommodate his contiguous lot area? Are we talking about breaking up his...
I've Cox Road because they had been prided upon my property. So I'm bound between Ezean East property, the Downs property, you have the Title of the Good, my neighbor's property to the west, and...
Is there any way, Chris, that you can make a highlighter and put this on this map and show us how you could redraw this? Why don't you highlight that and show us how you could redraw that?
Plus your contiguous property, one lot?
I think it would really be the best way.
Right.
I don't think this is such a fine art that we can't do this. We're going to have Mr. Jakubiec try and outline an area that he's referring to so that we can make some attempt to figure out what we're looking at here.
I know that I can't without it in front of me.
Yes, we understand where you're coming from. We get that, but, yes, we understand that. We are trying to go to a place where we can actually make everybody somewhat happier.
We're going to make you this, and we'll make this because you're our house.
Well, let Mr. Jakubiec figure out how to do this. So he'll figure this out. He's the master planner here. He's going to, he'll come up with something that we can work with and hopefully make a motion on, and hopefully, at the end of the day, everybody's happy. Now, that's impossible.
Yeah, that's not going to happen.
Not everybody happy.
No, anybody who sees us approve a map like this is going to have a big-time legal case. I don't think we can do it.
Almost there.
Planning and zoning meetings are not for the weak of heart.
They are not. Work out before you come here. Uh-oh, Mr. Jakubiec likes what he just did.
I mean, I can show you the, you know, the configuration of your lots? So here is Elm Lane, okay? So this, pick up those lots, make, you eliminate this line. So RV1 comes in, picks up all your property and your parking.
It's one of my favorites.
And then just north of you is Mr. McKay's lots.
They give it all back. No, I mean, they, I believe there are rules.
Actually, Mr. McKay's...
He passed some orders a year or two ago. So what I am is preserving those. A lot of property... So he's actually on Cox Road... Carcel between these various lots is a full area where, I mean, if you just... In my package I sent to you, these folks have been understood. And the steep slopes will solve. I had all this information on a drawing.
Theoretically, depends on how aggressive people can be developing. Yeah, I know. I agree, I agree. Would you be willing to make, what's it called? Would you be willing to make a motion, somebody make a motion on this map tonight?
Should I make the motion now before I see the map? So this street, half of the street belongs to me. These lots are there, belong to me.
I want you to guess at what he's drawing.
I don't need to guess, I'm four.
That's what I want to hear. That's exactly what I want to hear.
We're getting a chuckle out of that.
Okay, we're getting silly here.
We have some Cox Road people there, too.
Yes, we do.
Well, see where this lot angles, that's where my house is right here. And my driveway encompasses onto that.
Okay, do we have a, do we have a resolution here?
Yeah, we have a resolution.
Okay, let's come back to order, please.
I make a motion that we adopt, we adopt the map. We haven't seen you.
Yeah, we're going to not even look at it and just guess.
And I don't want to see it, it'll only confuse me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, well, do we have, we also have some Cox Road concerns.
No, he's already talked, Mr. McKay's already talked.
What he has here, I can agree. I mean, that's all I asked for the very first meeting we had.
Does it help your property now?
One thing, I want to make sure Mr...
You added Mr. McKay's Cox Road thing in there, right?
Come on, one more time.
That's all in his map.
You say, "Yes, it is in his map." Okay, yeah, yeah, I think it is, I'm sure it is.
Yeah, this map is actually much better.
Okay.
For purposes, because where the dogleg is...
We want to make people happy here.
That's, this, this, this street right here, I own half of that street.
We love to make happy people.
Yeah, but we're not going to draw a map. So these, all these lots, this block of lots from here down are mine.
Let's find this little skinny line, that's right here, right? This line, because your house is on that lot, on these two.
This is the alley that is on my property. These, this block of lots is my block of lots in half the street.
And this block of lots goes all the way up to...
Well, we've seen what, three letters? I've seen Ezean East, the top lot, right here. At that block, yeah.
You get, so they've got that.
Yeah.
Okay, so it would come down here and it would pick up, you'd probably want to pick up this, too.
It's not to be...
Oh, no, I'm sorry. No, this line, I'm drawing it here.
Yeah.
I don't want to draw that over there. Look at that.
Right.
We don't want it. I mean, that's just like Mr. McKay's, you can't do anything with that.
No, but the trouble is, if I have to combine, if I need the value option, that is for the attorney to combine with those last, that is theirs. You're taking...
And I think, I am, I appreciate your concern about it.
I don't see how you can spud.
You need to go to their meeting and tell them.
That's not spud zone, that's not spud zone, I could tell you all about spud. But, but I, but I think, I mean, look, you can go all the way up there, oops, here, and then pick up these properties where your parking is.
Can I ask you one question, Chris? Why do you think what you're gaining by making it RC? Because if you make it, with the restrictions that's on my property, to be able to build a home on there, it's really no different than what you're gaining by making it RC. It's so difficult to do something.
It actually makes more sense.
You're talking about slopes, steep slopes and...
I'm saying that that property in general, just the simple fact that it's...
Drop off in these lots.
Part of it is...
All of this here?
Title buffer?
Down to the marsh.
Part of it is steep slopes.
Right. Stays RC.
There's a lot of restrictions there. That's not to say that I, with the use of all the land as a combination, I can't plant trees, get one or two possible lots out of.
This is all...
When you make part of my property... When you make part of my property, a different zone, then I can't do that. I can't combine properties to make, to meet the requirements for a billable lot.
I see that's your house right here.
Is he not able to?
I can see the slopes driving down, like there's your driveway and then these properties here.
Is he not able to take it out of the?
That's right. I was going to take it, keep it RC.
All my property you could, yes, but I couldn't, I wouldn't be able to accept the fact that you took part of my property, just a steep slope.
I just drove, drove us right over here.
One of my neighbors, for example, had used part of his steep slope property to make his lot big enough to be a billable lot. And so if you need a total amount of square.
Well, what did he do? How did he develop that steep slope?
Didn't have to. All he needed was the extra square foot, he gets 6,000 or 7,000 square feet, he can utilize it for that portion of it. If you call it RC, then that's not, cannot be part of that same building. So that's how you would harm me in that respect.
You betcha.
And who knows, in the planning season, how I would go about utilizing those areas. There may be areas like that they don't have trees on, now I can plant, to make up for my.
Okay, I've got it. And we have agreement. Very, very nice. What do you have to say, sorrys?
Do we have the other people that were here tonight that left? I mean, are we also accommodating them? Okay.
Yeah, they're Wickerham, the famous Wickerham.
Are we gonna work on B Street next?
There's the, I'm at Bayside Road down where I live. I'd like a little.
If we don't get a crosswalk by that school.
Drive.
Oh, I don't think the state highway wants to do it. Yeah, I want. You know, you put a crosswalk and all of a sudden you make things lighter.
They have to do that. I mean, everybody on that other side.
I'm watching kids get walked to school crossing Bayside.
Where they said they didn't want. When we designed that school, he said, we don't want anybody walking.
Nobody can walk to school. They have to ride the bus or something.
All wanted to do. Any of you live across the street?
Oh, I have examples on my side. I've got a couple of kids that could spit. No, they could spit to the elementary school, yet they have to come up to my house and stand on the corner.
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
Now they have to walk through traffic.
Well, you know, the thing about that road though, 261, I mean, I cross there every day with my dog and it's an act of God. I mean, I, I wait and then nobody will, nobody wants to stop. You just have to get yourself out there.
So rural, and that way we'll be able to get any number of crosswalks.
I'm all about it.
All right, all right, everybody take a seat. Let's see what this new, can we see the new design?
I have to be home by Thursday.
A new happy math here. What do we got? What do we got?
While we're to explain this, it would be that everybody in Wickerham.
And what happens at Elm Street? Those people, are they already, are they already RV1?
They're already RV1.
Okay, there you have it. I'm happy. I'm happy. I got it. I understand exactly what you're saying. I got it.
We haven't seen it yet, so we don't know. We're happy or not happy.
I got it. Right here, I know. I got it. I'm happy.
Right now.
See, that little swiggy line is our continuous here. So Mr. McKay's property is also, additional land on the right of where his house is also about the most environmentally sensitive.
Add it right here, a map you can see.
He's okay with that.
I'm not doing this. I appreciate.
Okay. Gary, Gary, the.
You stick to your guns, I do appreciate it.
Cox Road guy? Yeah, Gary, Gary's very good.
You know what, he had to go.
Mr. Colt Smith's property, it's right here. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All his properties are included now.
They're all in one zone?
They're all in one zone.
All right, and the Cox Road issue?
Yeah, Cox Road.
Oh, yeah, that's this.
That's me, he took care of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So this allowed it, so that Mr. McKay's property.
There's a small house. Excuse me, one second. There's a, there's another small house on the other side of that ravine. I'm sure you guys know about them. They were, they remodeled illegally, so the house has stop work orders all over it. That house, that house is also on the other side of that ravine. And it, I mean, I can't, where's my house? Right there, he's right here, that lot.
This one right there?
Yeah, that weird little, yeah, that's, that, that's a small house.
So what are you suggesting happened to that small house?
Full dose it because it was illegally.
It would have to be residential village like everything else. That's a house that's on Cox Road.
You show me the house on this map?
There's a small house.
Here's your house right there.
Right, this is me. This is the ravine and the small house is right there.
Oh, that guy.
Yeah, he's in this little.
Do you have an actual picture, Chris?
Yeah.
They fully renovated that house less than a year ago. And it's just vacant.
Doing illegally.
They did, they did it at night. They took, they took, they took those, they took those stop work orders off every morning and they got new ones every night and they took them right back off.
Mr. McKay, I want to understand, why did you bring up that fellow's property? You wanted RV1, you wanted.
Oh, it's not my house. It's just, it's another house that's on the main road. It should be RV1.
You're looking out for a neighbor, is that what you're doing?
Looking out for neighbors. Logic.
It's just a house that's on the street, it's me, it's a residence.
I know, but you're.
He's asking why you did.
If you guys decide you want to knock that house down, I don't think anybody's gonna, I don't think anybody's. Legally, that's, that's a house that's on the street. I mean, it's, it's been on the street for 50 years. So, yeah, yes. I mean, if we're protecting everybody's house that's already there, that house has been there for 50 years.
That was my question.
However, they did an illegal renovation. If y'all want to burn it down, nobody's gonna complain.
If that, if that house burns down tonight, I want to be held harmless.
All right, all right, let's, yeah.
You want to hope that house is covered. Have a seat, Mr. McKay, thank you very much.
They aren't here.
Well, that little house.
He's in Wickerham, right?
No, he's talking about Mr. McKay's neighbor.
On Cox Road.
There's a new owner of that house and she can't move in because of the way the renovations were done.
I mean, I personally feel that you should make all of those areas up there the same. So if that, if his house is RV1, you're gonna have to probably make that little shack an RV1. Yep, right. There you go. It should, it should do, it should be that.
And that's the neighbor to him.
Yep.
I drew that for you one day.
Illegal house.
I think so, yes. I'm, I think you're drawing it exactly how I drew it for you.
See, see how good you are.
Except for I can't see it, so I'm not voting on it.
You have it, you're not giving, go down. Okay.
Because there's no map in front of us.
Have we changed that we were thinking of making to this map done on that map?
No, because you haven't discussed, we haven't decided what you're going to do with this Ridgefield Station.
Let's talk about that. Who wants to talk first? You want to talk first? We know she don't want to talk, but you want to talk first?
No.
Okay, Mr. Brown does. I know you want to talk first.
I'm, I lose all the time.
You don't either. You said yay at least twice.
We've got a serious issue, we've got a gentleman sitting in waiting to see what we're doing.
I, all right, gotta make a decision. I support the propos, what.
Come on up to the microphone.
Recommended for one piece stays RC, the other larger section returns to RPC. Now, that will, that would still come back to us for approval of, of site development. It'll have to comply with all the new rules we put in, oh wow, I mean, the town council puts in.
Yes, please.
With respect to top lots and.
Open space and that kind of thing.
Open space, it'll have to comply with, as one of the.
Single family neighborhood, but yeah, it's, it's.
What about, what about the roads, as was pointed out in one of the letters, that Calvert County, that particular, what is it, RD4 road is limited to 50 homes or something. This would make it something like 65 or 70 homes.
So the town of Chesapeake Beach doesn't administer the county's roads. The town makes its own judgments about road standards and it has used the guidance by, provided by the road standards in Calvert County, but they're not town law. And the, what has happened historically is that in this particular project anyways, that the town engineer has been intimately involved in processing improvements plans after Platts have been approved and making determinations in terms of whether a road should be open section or closed section with sidewalks or the, the exact road section that ought to be built.
But we could come back, whenever the plan is presented to us, we, we could say it needs to be the, I don't have the terms right, RD5 with the sidewalks and the little bit wider streets because of the potential for school buses and that sort of thing.
Well, I, I don't know, actually. I know the project was, has not been plotted. Question is whether that final plat is still valid. I suspect that it's got to come back for planning commission approval to be renewed, in which case, if there's a basis for requiring sidewalks, yes, I, the planning commission can do that as part of your subdivision plat approval. But.
Yeah, so I guess one, one of my questions, it was, said the zoning commission has previously approved the plat.
Right.
But it has not been recorded. So is there any statute of limitations on our approval of Platts?
Yes, three years.
Like when you get a variance, you have one year or three years to do it and, or you lose it. And even so, could, could the developer take what he has from the planning commission and then go and record those lots? If that's the only thing left to separate them and make them marketable.
Larry, I honestly don't know the answer to that question right now, but I'm pulling up the subdivision regulations online.
Okay, let's, while you're doing that. While you're, do you have any more questions, Larry, or, Ms. Braw, what do you have to say about any of this? Any questions or anything specifically about these RC areas slash RPC areas? Most importantly, the redrawn map that he's got now, and it includes those two little areas in the Ridgefield Station. Do you like the, the completed map as drawn with all the Ridgefield Station, you know, included in the RC? Or are you thinking the way Larry is thinking that maybe we need to split them up or maybe they both should go into the RPC or they should stay both in the RC? What are your thoughts about that?
If I understand clearly, the status of Ridgefield Station, I would say to keep it as RC, which is what it is currently now. I, I'm not, I'm, I'm lessing.
What is currently known is RPC.
RPC, but we've drafted it.
We propose to change it so that it becomes.
Propose it into the RC.
Oh, okay, so it's currently.
It's currently.
And, and if I understand correctly, if it's changed to RC, then there can be no development.
Take away the development, pretty much, I think, most.
And do, and is this 50 homes? Is this?
54 units.
Well, yeah, there is a 54 total.
Would the RC designation take away all 54? They would still have some.
The way the map is now, the RC only takes away 13.
Okay, it only takes away 13.
So if, if you, if you wanted to make the RC much more expansive, you could presumably rezone all these legal lots of record, so the whole subdivision goes away.
I'm for that. If we're not going to get the FIDS.
Okay, so what were you going to show us there, Mr. Jakubiec? One last thing before we need to make a motion and get the show on the road.
If it's necessary, I just want to answer Larry's question about essentially, does this final plat become extinguished after a certain period of time of not recording it? And I simply can't recall the answer to that question, so I'm looking it up. I don't, if that's material to.
Well, it just seems to me there, there should be some finality when the planning commission makes a decision and then somebody goes and invests in planning and development and then we come back later and change our minds, that doesn't seem fair to me.
A lot of site development, site plans go away. I mean, Mr. Donovan had all these site plans, they all went away. You have a time limit on almost everything you do in building and real estate. I mean, that's just the way, the nature of contracts.
That's the business.
That's the biz, yeah. So, I mean, I don't know if there's a time limit, but I, you know.
Oh, no, you sit down. Get back in that chair.
Wait, 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 are we taking a minute, a break?
I'm sorry.
Are you literally leaving?
No, she's leaving while you're looking.
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
Temporarily.
Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, sure. I understand.
He's worried, he's worried, don't leave, don't leave, he says.
Is she leaving?
No, no, no.
We don't get through this thing.
Cindy, we cannot get through this tonight. There's too many things in the air, this is ridiculous.
I don't care until midnight, we're getting through this. That's my goal.
Wow, crack that whip. Legally vulnerable and it's going to leave the.
Midnight or bus.
We're going on a bus?
We're gonna go on a bus.
Oh, too bad traders closes, really.
Too bad.
What was your assessment to keep it all in RC and take away the lots?
I, well, I thought it was the 13 lots that if it was RC, it would impact 13 lots, not all of them. Yeah, I, I wasn't prepared for.
I'm so confused about the.
All 50.
The 50 lots.
The 13 I, I can sleep at night with.
Can you sleep at night if we lose the FIDS parcel? That's my question.
Yes, because I think it's still protected. That's what our attorney told us.
He didn't tell. Wow, I don't see it conveying. I think that Ridgefield Station is going to be irate if that FIDS parcel doesn't convey and somebody builds 50 lots out. They're going to be irate. People are, if that happens, people are going to be so angry.
Do not publish my home address, please.
They're not, they won't be angry at us. We don't even have an attorney to tell us what's what.
Okay, so approval of a final plat shall not be final until entry into a contract or production of complete guarantee is set forth in Article 7. Basically, the, the plaque gets approved, but it's not final approved until the guarantees are, are made. In other words, guarantees to build the project. If that, that additional 13 units was not recorded.
Recorded. And it expires or? You're sorry that they weren't recorded or what are you? Essentially, if they weren't recorded, it's pretty much they have to, they have to expire and start all over again or reapply or.
Three-year requirement.
Now, because he wants Larry asked this question and.
As far as you know, they don't have to come back to the planning commission for approval of that plat.
Cindy, why is it that we can't table this?
Because we were asked to have this done tonight. Because you know what they're going to do if we don't? They're going to go without recommendations.
Who's going to?
The town council.
Well, that would be dumb on them.
Of course, I know the.
I, I mean, I don't know how they can ask us to approve something in this way. That's ridiculous.
As far as we're concerned, it's finally approved.
Yes.
We're, we're done with it.
Right. Even though it's not recorded and it's been approved. And, but unlike the recordation, with recordation, now the roads can be dedicated, the land, the lots can be sold. But that's, that doesn't apply to the thirteen that are there now. So it's been approved, but it's not likely to come back to the planning commission for another subdivision approval.
Okay, who else would like to ask one more question or comment? And then we have to have a motion. And who would like to make that motion?
I would like to make a comment.
Okay, comment quickly.
Oh, well, first of all, I did call the question to the record. And I'd like to record everybody's answer. Do the commissioners on this commission wish to rezone in a way that causes the FIDS parcel to lose its requirement to convey?
All right, we're not going to answer that question because we are not, we're not going to entertain that question. Out of order for that one, let's go.
That's not out of order.
Anybody want to make a motion on this issue? Mr. Brown, make a motion, please.
I'll, I'll make a motion that the Streamwalk area, the, revert back to RPC on the map. And the other area, the name of which I don't have.
At the end of Valley View Drive?
End of Valley View Drive, remain RPC.
And then what about the amended area with?
Old one.
Well, he's got to also amend, he's got to also amend.
They have to amend the whole map, so.
You have to amend the whole map to include Cox and up till Elm, Elmway.
So, and, and to that add the, the drawing as amended there, including those two sections on Cox Road. So there's one at one end and, and the remainder of large block going over to Elmway. So essentially, three parts to that motion.
Can you re-say that one? So.
The Streamwalk Way.
Amend the map, let's, let's make the motion to amend the map, the draft map or the draft map, zoning map, zoning map.
So just for a point of clarification for me, so if we change that to RPC, then they can, they can develop the, build the fifty units. I mean, the, one of the, the considerations that they had asked for in their letter was that if we weren't, if we, we're not going to make it so they couldn't build, then could we amend it so they wouldn't do fifty houses and rather twenty-five?
Mr. Jakubiec has a, a response to that, actually. I guess he's.
What's that issue we hear is thirteen or nothing? Okay, that, there, there's only that small part of Streamwalk Way that I showed you, that is sort of the cul-de-sac that sweeps and then kind of worship shape. It's only that small part that is currently shown as RC. The main body of Streamwalk Way, the fifty, it's actually thirty-two, roughly, I think thirty-two lots, is already plotted, it's in the land records, and it's already shown on the map as RPC. The request from the developer is, hey, we've got this other part that you have erroneously shown as RPC, or as RC. We got this approved by the planning commission. We want the zoning map to confirm the approval that the town granted years ago for the, so that we can build these thirteen additional houses. Do you, you know, so it's not, it has nothing to do with fifty, it's just thirteen.
Fifty is plotted and thirteen is expired, is that right?
No, fifteen, thirty-two.
Fifty is plotted and we can't, that they will be built because they are legally.
Well, they can be built.
They can be built, but they aren't necessarily permissible?
No, they're permissible, they're, they're.
Or they're not necessarily permitted to build.
Or not yet permitted to build.
They're not yet permitted and.
The subdivision has been.
They are not, are they master plotted within the original master plan of Richfield Station? They are.
Yes, but it's kind of immaterial because there's a recorded plat that the planning commission has approved and it's recorded in land records. These are existing lots, there's about thirty-two of them. Then the balance, roughly thirteen lots, is outside of the recorded area. The developer had a subdivision, it had a total of fifty-two lots and, but held back recording a cluster of units, thirteen units, even though the whole thing was approved. Again, that's.
But technically, they have those lots, we could put those lots into resource conservation if we wanted. I'm not saying that I want to do that.
I'm, I'm going to kind of, I really want to get Kathleen.
Yeah, Kathleen.
Okay, that'll be my question.
Okay, so if we change it to RPC, it's really just the development of the thirteen houses?
Yes, the thirteen, if you did it, yes, right. Those thirteen houses that have been previously approved would continue to go, presumably at some point in the future, may continue to go to, to final plat recordation, and then they would file for permits to build them.
But the, the thirty-two have already been done?
Well, they're plotted, they're in the records.
And they've already been recorded and they're.
They can be sold, they're legal lots of record.
Okay, so it's the thirteen units that we are, that this will impact.
That's exactly right.
At some point.
That's right, we, we don't dictate when a developer might have, but this opens, it keeps the window open that those thirteen additional units could be added in the future.
Thank you. So, I'm sorry, I'm going back to Larry's motion. Amend the draft zoning map to include the changes as redrawn by Mr. Jakubiec and to allow, I'm trying to talk to you, but.
And to that section at Streamwalk Way that was changed from the current zoning map.
Phase two growth allocated, the eight to nine.
Thirteen lots.
The thirteen lot, do you, do you know what area we're talking about? The thirteen lot area?
Yeah. Do you want me to show you on the plat?
I just don't know what to call it, the thirteen lot area.
Stream, Streamlock Way, right?
Walk Way.
To be RC, right?
Be RPC.
Oh, RPC.
We changed it to RC and now we're putting it back to RPC.
Revert back to what it is on the current zoning map.
Right.
Okay, so the thirteen lot area to be RPC, and that would be it, that, just that. No, there's another.
And the other as drawn. We don't have to address that other little strip because it's in our map as.
So we just leave that.
So we don't, we aren't talking about changing that.
So we can just leave that.
I'm not talking about changing.
Yeah, we can just leave that. So the motion is, I see it, to include all the redrawing and that area with the thirteen lots. That's all we have to talk about in this motion. Because the other thing would just automatically say RC, right? So amend the draft zoning map to include the changes as redrawn by Mr. Jakubiec and to allow the thirteen lot parcel area to be RPC. Does that make sense to you?
Yes.
And it makes sense to pretty much us? I'm not sure, I'm not.
Okay, so that's my motion.
Okay, so that's your motion, and I'm going to second that motion. Now let's discuss quickly. Ms. Redkey.
I'm not sure how I feel about it. And, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the letter that we received from homeowners on.
Streamwalk Way.
Streamwalk Way. Is this impacting them? So they're going to basically. I'm just asking, I just want to make sure what I.
What do you think about that, Mr. Jakubiec? Will it impact them?
I should say, the concern of the homeowner.
Building.
I think that, that there seems, I, I, I read some misunderstandings about all this in the letters. I, I, I see that some people think that, that there was never going to be a continuation of the Streamwalk Way, that this is a surprise that these additional lots are going to be developed. But it's reasonable to understand because they weren't in the planning commission and didn't see the thing approved, they didn't perhaps see the, the lots plotted. And so they, they exist and the development could have happened already. And so, and as far as the comments about the, the subdivision being developed in a way where steep slopes may fail, there was comments about that. The, the town saw that happen on a number of lots and responded by requiring third-party review of all, a third-party geotechnical review of all grading out there in the field. So that happens now. So what, what happens in, in Chesapeake Beach is Calvert County reviews grading plans and processes the grading plans, it's not a town thing. So we uncovered that, that was not satisfactory in this area. So that's why the town requires a third-party review, which is actually funded by the developer, but the town controls the, the engineer. So that doesn't happen now. Proper compaction is assured before development takes place. And you can only look in Richfield or in the heritage to see how that process happened. Steep slopes, same type of topography, but the area was developed and third-party reviews happened for every lot that was created. So that's, that was the, kind of the response from the town council to that issue. And of course, the average resident's not going to understand that. They're just going to know what they heard or saw years ago.
No, I'm talking about the specific discussion about buses turning around and all of that. I mean, I'm not.
Well, the proposal here would provide cul-de-sacs, so it would actually enable buses to turn around in a way that doesn't exist now because the road dead ends.
Well, they're building beyond that, so they would build a, I would.
Yeah, they would provide, build beyond where it dead ends. So, and there are two cul-de-sacs would be created. So presumably, a bus would turn around in the cul-de-sac.
Okay, so we have.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say, this, this, these remaining lots are no different than any other existing part of that subdivision where people are living today. The topography is the same, the nature was the same. People are living in areas that were developed in the same manner as being proposed, except now the town has higher safeguards for dealing with grading and steep slopes.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to amend the draft zoning map to include the changes as redrawn by Mr. Jakubiec and to allow the thirteen lot parcel area to be RPC. And I second it. And I need you all to raise your hand if you vote yes. So everybody, okay, discussion, quickly, let's go.
Okay, in the RPC, there's a, there's a stipulation. It says the town council should, shall hold public hearing on the reclassification and development plan according to the provisions of Article seven. Town council shall review the entire record of such application, and public hearing may affirm, deny, modify, or establish such other or additional conditions to the recommendations of the commission as it may deem appropriate regarding such application consistent with the intent of this chapter. This commission doesn't have any idea which of these plats are part of the original, which are just offshoot ones. And we know that that happened because everybody from Richfield Station has come to us and basically told us as much.
Mr. Jakubiec, in response.
What I would like to do is table this and get more information.
Mr. Jakubiec, do a response to that, because we're not tabling it. So what is your response, response to that?
RPC was, was a step precedent to the various subdivision plats that have been processed in various phases over twenty-some years in that subdivision. So there's, it's, it's immaterial.
That's good for me. Anybody else have discussion before we vote? All in favor, raise your right hand. There's two of us. Okay, do we have another motion on the floor? Ms. Kathleen? Give a motion on the floor for the zoning map.
I don't know, I, I just have.
My motion is to table it, if anybody wants to entertain that one.
We can't.
I would make a motion, I would amend her motion to table it, that we adopt the map as proposed with the changes that Mr. Jakubiec outlined on.
I'll second that motion. Any questions or, or issues with, with what the new motion is? The new motion is basically amend the draft zoning map to include the changes as redrawn by Mr. Jakubiec. That's it.
Yes, well, it's to adopt the, the zoning map.
And to amend and adopt, okay.
With the change that Mr. Jakubiec has outlined.
So we're not doing, you're not including Richfield Station in that?
That's right, Richfield Station.
stays as is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It stays as RPC?
No, it stays.
As RC, okay. Says stays at RC as originally the draft indicated. Okay, so any questions, Ms. Braw?
No, no questions.
Questions there, and, okay, we got Mr. Red. Okay, everybody who is for this new amendment, new motion, please raise your right hand. All opposed?
I'm recusing myself because I don't see a map.
Well, okay, there was a map and he did show it to us. Okay, so there you have it, and thank you for recusing. And we have, now we have one last thing we want to do.
I'm sorry, I thought it was buzzing.
You are not buzzing.
No, I'm not leaving.
I'm sorry to see you.
We have an hour and ten minutes to go.
Yes, now we have, we have a little bit more.
To go.
We have.
I had hard candy.
I've already had the hard candy that you gave me.
You want more?
I'm done, no.
Okay, now we have to go to one more. I can't even find my.
The map's been approved.
Now the map's been approved, so now we've got to transmit it all to.
Adam, Chair, I have a, I have a motion and.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion to transmit the proposed zoning ordinance, those previous, the proposed zoning ordinance text amendments, those previously approved as well as tonight's text amendments, one through eleven, the zoning map and the resolution to the mayor and town council for their acceptance and review.
All in favor? Can we, oh, any questions first, any questions before you vote? I'm sorry, any questions? Yes, sir.
Discussion.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Before we do that.
Yes, sir.
Just looking at the minutes from the last meeting and looking at our chart for group homes. This chart doesn't match what it says here.
Does where?
Oh, we would need to.
So under group homes, number twenty.
Oh, well.
Okay, it says CCC, not permitted in the commercial zones and C in, in, in RC.
Well, I thought we had changed that to S, S E or S C.
Well, what was passed at the last meeting was C conditional use in all the residential zones and the RPC zone.
Right, but we changed it.
We changed it tonight. Changed it tonight, remember, because we had to table it, but we had to, we wrote it back to S, I think it was SC in all districts, right?
It was S E.
S E, I'm sorry, I can't even. SE, I'm sorry. I can't even get that straight. But we did that, we did that.
You changed C to SC. This shows in RPC, it shows it is not permitted. And what we said was that-
Well, it has to be in all districts. I don't think any, even in RPC, you can have a-
It actually doesn't have to.
Well, but-
I'm just going by what the motion passed.
Right, the motion that passed changed all the Cs to SE.
All of it to SC.
I'm talking about at our last meeting.
We overwrote it.
The last meeting said that it is group homes to change, wait a second.
We changed it to-
C conditional use in all the residential zones and the RPC zone and not permitted in commercial zones and the RC zone. And that's not what is reflected in this year.
Tonight, we had to change it.
Well, show me what you changed, because as I understood it, we just changed the Cs to SE or SC or something.
SE, that's correct.
This, I'm talking about where it says not permitted under RPC, we had passed that it was C, so it would be SC or SE or whichever one you want to pick.
Well, I-
Tonight, we changed it to SE, but-
I think we've changed all of the zones to SC, right? Or what are we doing here?
SE.
SE, yeah.
If all the SC-
Except for commercial zones, which doesn't have any-
RPC would be SE.
Yes, yeah, maybe that, yeah.
And then the commercials are all-
I'm just trying to-
Oh, he's trying to be organized. How sweet. He's trying to make it all happen. I like that. Yes, that's what we did tonight.
The, in the last meeting, it's not permitted in RC, so that would be not permitted. Okay, and in RPC, which is one of these over here.
Yeah.
Last column is RPC, what-
It's very confusing.
And then tonight, we changed it back to SE. So it was conditional. We changed it last meeting to RPC and then tonight-
Just have RC on the last column.
Oh, Larry, it's-
We've changed it to SE.
I'm just, just trying to get-
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate, I appreciate you doing that. Okay, so now-
You put the lime and the coconut.
We have, did you get the motion to trans, now we need a second on your motion to transmit.
I have a question as well.
Yes.
Can somebody read the RV2 district description that we're passing right now?
No, because we're not talking about that right now.
Right, but, but three different things came out. One came out to the public. And the one that everybody thinks we're passing has a certain-
Oh, we did have one that we had changed a couple of times. That is true.
Yeah, so the RPC district description that everybody thinks-
Was the one that we added-
We have-
Because I know we had-
Does not include the words "and to encourage and facilitate development and infill." That is crossed out. That was crossed out at the public hearing.
We did have it. Do you remember that?
It's shown that way in the package that we sent.
Yeah, I'm just- Yeah, it is shown that way.
Okay, I'm just making sure that we have that.
There's so many different versions. I got it. We are getting too many versions of everything. I got it, Laurie. You're right there. So, I'm sorry. Back to your motion. Did we actually vote on it and we got that accomplished on transmitting this to the town council?
No, we did not. You want me to say it again?
Did you get any of that motion, Sharon, about transmitting all these amendments and the motion, the, say it again. I'm so sorry. I'm like-
I make a motion to transmit the proposed zoning ordinance, text amendments 1 through 11, those previously approved, and tonight's, the zoning map and the resolution to the mayor and town council for their acceptance and review.
We got a second?
We have a second? And now we've had some questions. Any more final questions?
I would like to move to amend.
Excuse me.
The motion probably should say, "Review and approval," because you're recommending that they approve it. So rather than their acceptance and review, it's maybe their acceptance and approval or review and approval.
Review and approve.
Right.
Can we change that language?
With a review and approval.
Yes. Thank you for that. And I know, Laurie, you just wanted to make another motion, but we're-
Well, I guess my question is, does that motion include lifting of the moratorium?
No.
It does not.
We don't, no, we don't do any of that. That's not our-
And that's not part of the resolution?
It's in, it's in the resolution.
Oh, it is, I'm sorry.
So I would like to remove-
Or you don't have to, but it's in the resolution.
I would like to remove the language that advises that we want to lift the moratorium from the resolution.
How can, how can we not do that?
Just cross it out.
No, I know physically how we can. All right, what does everybody think about changing that language so that you take out the moratorium?
This is among the things that the council, the town attorney did advise. This is one of them.
Oh, this is one of them. To keep it in there.
That, and he and I did-
Moratorium, you're talking about?
Yes, that, that's right.
I think this is part of that process.
It doesn't say that you're lifting it, but acknowledges that it exists and it references the moratorium, so it ties it all together.
Ties it together. It's part of the process. I got it. Okay, so, do I hear a second on Laurie's?
I'll second that.
Okay, second, and let's talk about it. Do you want to change this language and take the moratorium out, Mr. Brown?
You mean, recommend they lift the moratorium?
No, she's asking to remove the language of lifting the moratorium out of the resolution.
I think that-
Wait a minute, I'm asking Mr. Brown here. What are you thinking here?
It's only in that last paragraph, is that right?
Yeah, so at the very last paragraph, at the very last sentence, everybody.
Right.
It talks about for rescinding a temporary moratorium on development applications.
No, I'm, I'm fine with it as written.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So?
So if I, if I misunderstood, I'm fine with it as written to lift the moratorium.
So you just vote against my amendment.
They're second to Laurie's motion to amend.
He seconded it. He did second it, but are you rescinding the second? Okay, so he is rescinding the second, so do I hear another second for that motion? I do not hear another second for that motion, so.
It dies for lack of a second.
Thank you, thank you. So we're back, I'm sorry. So now we're back to the motion. And do you want to repeat the motion? Are we good with it?
He doesn't need to.
Okay, very good. All in favor, let's raise your right hand if you're all in favor of the motion. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, or are you actually just recusing yourself or you were?
No, I'm opposed.
You're going to say no? Okay, now, the next thing I have to do quickly here, we have, we have to change some dates, if you don't mind. We want to set a workshop for discussing group homes and our townhouse designs and a few other things. We're talking late October, probably the Tuesday before our next, the meeting in October. Does anybody have an issue with a workshop at that point in time?
Can you tell me what that date is? I don't have a calendar.
We're talking at possibly, we're looking at maybe what, the 18th, Chris, because our meeting is the 26th?
Right.
We're looking at the 18th, which is October 18th, if indeed, everybody can do it. I don't know if Sharon can do it, I don't know.
Normally, normally you have to ask the town.
And Holly needs to know. So we've got just-
We don't know what, she's not scheduled.
The other issue is, as you know-
Maybe, Madam Chair, we should recommend two dates that will, that will be available for the work session and then-
Okay, 18th and, what's another good date for you, Mr. Jakubiec and Sharon? What do you think? We'll look at the 18th and what other day?
This is in October?
Yeah.
Not Halloween.
We could dress up.
We could come in costume.
We could, we could. We really could. We are already in costume. Yeah, there you have it.
Oh, off.
It's the second week of October. I'm off the second week of October.
All right, come on, guys.
All right, she's off the second week. We don't ever let her off.
We could start a meeting in October, a normal meeting at 6 o'clock.
I think it's going to take us like many, several hours to get through some of this stuff.
You think that'll do it? No way.
Yeah, and here, you couldn't even be here on time tonight, so what are you talking?
I was here on time. I was here on time.
I, I was doing other things for the town.
All right, we're going to talk about the 18th, and if you want to come up with a second date, that's good. And also, on November, I know that probably both Kelly and I are not going to be available on the 9th, which is our next November meeting. Can anybody do the 8th of November? Or can everybody do the 8th of November? That is a Tuesday. Yeah, well, yeah, in fact, they'll probably hold elections here. We can probably go and vote here.
They'll probably be busy here.
Yep. Well, they have it over at the community center, don't they? They don't count votes in here, do they?
They won't be here. It's not here.
It's not here. Okay, can we talk about the 8th, or do you just want two of us to be gone? I mean, that's possible too, I guess. Nobody's talking.
The 8th, the 8th is fine, I think with me. Again, I feel like you should give two dates.
Couple of dates. Let's talk about the 8th, and maybe there's another, maybe this, I don't know, is Monday night, the 7th a possibility for another second?
Other work session on the 7th.
Okay, so the 8th is about the only, at least.
And you're not back until the 16th.
I'm not back until the 16th, so I could do the 17th of the guy council meeting, so I could, but Kelly could possibly be here, so at least one of us could be here. So we'll look at the 8th and then go from there, and if it doesn't work, then we'll go to another date that Kelly will for sure be here, and then you can, you know, I don't want you two guys to have a lack of quorum or something if somebody else is sick. Okay, so we've got those ideas. Okay, December looks like it's okay right now. As we know, December is the 7th, right? I think December 7th was the-
Yes.
Pearl Harbor Day.
Pearl Harbor Day was gonna be our next, our December meeting.
Was gonna be for what now?
Our December meeting is December 7th.
Saying 7th.
7, it's the number 7, yeah. So we have, yeah, October workshop. We've got a regular meeting in October, and we're looking at November 8th and for sure, December 7th. Okay, if there are no other issues or concerns that we have to deal with, I'm going to adjourn this meeting until October. Thank you.
So soon?
I have to call for a motion. Do, can I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move that we adjourn this meeting-
Do I have a second?
Right now.
Second.
And all in favor?
Yay.
Aye.
Get your arm up there, bud.
We didn't get to the round robin.
55 more minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Gosh, so soon!
I know, I'm sorry. I am sorry. It is kind of a little early for us, but you know, at least we got some of it done.
On your resolution, you got whereas on October 26th, defining such and such, whereas on October-